We'd like to welcome everybody to the May 4 meeting of the budget for the Duber Board of Alderman. At this time, if you told me in prayer, have me follow. We just asked tonight, as we do the work with people, that we be ever mindful of making sure that we do those things, be pleased to thee and in the best interest of our citizens. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I have a picture of the American flag right here. Did we? Okay, excuse me, sorry, didn't see it.
Pull it out.
And we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's true. We should talk, bro.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, president. Alderman Astor, here. Mayor Outlaw, here. Alderman Kinsey, here. Alderman Best, president. Alderman Odom, here.
And everybody's here. Let's see, anything before we get going here? Oh, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, I need you very briefly in a closed session to discuss a matter that requires us to maintain our attorney-client privilege pursuant to 143-311A3.
Clerk and the manager stay in here?
Sure.
Okay.
So moved.
The motion, we have a second. Motion's second, any discussion? I'll pay the motion and say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. We are now back in session. Mr. Davis?
Mayor members of the board, with your direction and approval tomorrow, we would like to file a lawsuit against the following defendants. Gazim Almarisi, Gazim Inc., Fami Abdu Ali Ahmad. These are the owners and operators of the Five Points Mini-Mark. This is a, would be a public nuisance lawsuit with the objective of requiring the owners to implement roughly a dozen conditions to improve the public safety with that area. This is a very high crime, the highest crime location in the city of New Bern. Some of the things that are being recommended in the lawsuit are not only cameras installed throughout the property, but those cameras would allow police department access to those cameras remotely 24/7 and access to all stored videos, improve lighting, improve safety with respect to the front of the facade, background checks on employees, limiting the hours so that it would not be open all night, a number of the conditions, all with the objective of trying to reduce crime and improve public safety in that corridor. If I could have a motion to that effect.
Second.
Second. Second's their discussion. See you then. Let's have a roll call.
Alderman Bingle, yes. Alderwoman Harris, yes. Alderman Astor, yes. Mayor Outlaw, yes. Alderman Kinsey, yes. Alderman Best, yes. Alderman Odom, yes.
The motion carries. Anything else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Stevens, number one.
Thank you, Mayor. It's that time of year again, budget season. We come before you during these work sessions to discuss all things budget and anything that the board wants us to consider or ask any questions regarding what's in the budget and what could potentially be added or taken away. So this is your opportunity to provide some input to staff so that we can make those modifications, eventually resulting in us adopting a balanced budget sometime either in May or June in preparation for July 1 commencement of our next fiscal year, which would be 2122. So we're doing things a little bit different. You have the agenda in front of you. Just real quickly, there was one item of modification that the Finance Department identified along with the HR Department that they needed to change. The amount of employees that will be changing is the same, but the number was wrong, so they have provided an update to that number. So you can see what the true number is for the difference between 2020, 2021 to 2021, 2022. So that's been provided. Y'all just tear out the old sheet, which is page seven, and put it back into your budget book, and that will replace that, just so you know what that total number is. But the same difference, six employees is still the same, so there's no change there. We're doing things a little bit different in this budget. Charlie and Jordan seem to always get the short end of the stick as far as having to sit around until the very, very end, and sometimes their portion would get kicked into another day. So I decided to let them be first this year so that they can get their budgets presented to the board and the board can ask any questions that they may have. So at this point, I'm going to ask Jordan to come up, if he wants to come up and ask or give a brief synopsis of what's in his budget, and then the board can ask any questions.
Steve, let me ask you a question before we get, this is applicable to all the departments. In your budget, you have 1.4% across the board. Is that correct?
Cost of living adjustment, yes, sir. 1.4%.
And then in addition, you have a 2.1%. Mayor?
Up to 2.1%. Yes, sir.
And so a highly productive employee is rated or whatever evaluated by the department head, however your process works, in effect, could this year get a 3.5% total COLA or increase in pay? Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. And I think generally, in the past, I want to say that is limited to about 20, I believe. I'll have to look it up and see, but I've actually can probably go back. I might even have it somewhere on my computer here. But when you talk about the upper echelon performers, it's almost like, you know, in school, you talk about the bell curve. You got your, you know, the lower performers, then you got all the people who fall within the averages, and then you got your upper higher performers. Those would be the ones getting the three and a half percent.
Reason, I just want to make sure everybody understood this, that hypothetical, if you had a particular department that just really was on top of the game, there wouldn't be so much money budgeted for 2.1 within that department? Or did you assign that amount, a certain amount per department? Or in the case of a quasi-marginal efficiency department and there were no merit raises, how does that money filter down?
Budgetarily wise, Mayor, it's all based on individual performance, not necessarily the department performance. So those individuals' evaluations, their annual evaluations are performed, and then they're scored accordingly. They fall within those curves, and then at that point, they're given the raises applicable to wherever they fall within the score. So budgetarily wise, I think Mary accounted for budgeting for 2.1% as a total, which means there will be less than that, but, you know, we've got to figure out whether the board's going to approve it or not before we can.
Well, I just didn't know if there was, I read off the, but I didn't quite understand if there was a cap on the amount.
2.1% is the performance. It's not a cap on how much. I mean, it's based on the person's salary.
Right. But are we still operating under the maximum range of salaries as somebody got?
Yes.
So if somebody's at their max, they might have gotten a two or 2.1, but they wouldn't go over that max salary, correct?
They would get, they would get what would be known as a bonus. It would not be an increase in their salary. So let's say if they're, they were at the max of range, let's call it 70,000, just as a hypothetical number, and there was an additional 1% on the board after the 1.4 and the 2.1. So let's say if they were a fantastic employee, that means that 1.1% of that would take them, and the 1.4 would take them to the max of the salary, it'd still be 1% left. They would get a $700 one-time bonus. They would not go any further than the maximum of the salary.
Wow.
So again, just to understand, let's say from an indexing standpoint, somebody that's just starting with the city that's highly productive, would the 2.1 be sustainable? Or is that a once-a-year 2.1% salary increase? You get the 1.4 cost of living across the board. The 2.1, does that, is that a one-time deal? Or does that stay with that employee?
Well, that's always the way it's been. It's a 2.1% salary increase, so that would be year over year over year, they're going to continue to get that 2.1. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not compounding, if that's what you're asking. It's for this year. So if a person's making, you know, again, let's call it the $70,000 thing, Mark, 2.1% be a little over $1,400, that would be what they would get. And that would be, so then their new salary would be 71,400 and some dollars or whatever, and until the next budget year to where you look at it as to whether or not they would get an increase or not.
Okay. And again, Reason, I don't want to belabor it, but the employee would continue to sequentially, rapidly rise in salary up to the cap on position, but in the case of, if they are capped out, they would not, that would not help their salary increase to 2.1. That would be, because it would be in form of a bonus.
They reach the top of the salary range, which very few do. So I don't, I'm not, I'm not so sure I understand the rapidly moving up the chain, because not many people ever reach the upper echelon of the salary grade. Some do, but very few. Bobby Astor may have, because he was here for 38 years. But, you know, there are some and few, but once they reach the top of that salary range, that's the salary that they get. If they get performance increase year over year based on that, it would be totally in the form of just a bonus. Their salary would not increase. It would just be a bonus.
Okay. Thank you for your information. I just, I know that I always, every year, want to make sure I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that. You know, our most valuable assets in this city is our employees. You take a 1.4% increase in salary for an employee that's making $35,000 a year, what's he going, he's getting what? $500, less than $500 a year increase? So with the times like it is and with the salaries that are being paid close to city and other cities around us, like, for example, Craven County's going to be giving 2% increases and, you know, some other cities close by will be giving 2% increases as well, as well as the merit raise. I was going to come in here and hope to ask for 2.5% increase in salary for the employees but would try to settle for a 2% increase. Last year, it was only a 1.5% increase in salary for them. And most of you know, things aren't getting any cheaper around here. I mean, you know, go to the grocery store and go look at gas, lean and stuff like that. I mean, our employees are very valuable to us. When we have these hurricanes, they're in the middle of it. When we have electrical outages, they're climbing poles in the backyard of somebody's house at 3:00 in the morning, or fighting fire, or having to chase criminals down. So I would, I would love for us to consider a 2.5% increase in salary for our employees. But if nothing else, we can, I'd like to see at least a 2%, which would be equal to...
Are you, are you talking specifically about COLA or a total?
COLA.
Okay.
COLA.
Yeah, because 3.5 is what we're proposing for those who perform, but 1.4 is the COLA. So you're talking about just the COLA being two or two and a half.
I'm talking about COLA. Correct.
Thank you.
Because what's the max on the merit again? That you got?
2.1 is the maximum.
And how many people will receive that? Very few?
Maybe somewhere between 20 and 40, probably.
Okay. 20 and 40 employees?
Yeah, out of 500.
So, okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
How many employees do we have total?
480.
480?
Roughly.
And Ms. Mary, with the COVID funds, are we able to set aside like we did last year when we gave, when we went and gave $25 gift cards to the employees? Are we able to give a one-time bonus with these funds?
We can, with the American Rescue Plan money, we'll be able to.
Okay. So on what you're saying, my thought process was, is we have 480 employees, times a one-time bonus of 500, comes up to 240,000. I think we have money to put aside to do that as a one-time bonus for what's going on with COVID in regards to, they enjoy the $25, but I think that that one-time bonus is also showing them through all of this that we understand and that they deserve that type of, you know, raises. That could help a lot of people that work for the city. So in lieu of what Alderman Astor's saying, 2.5, you're okay with the 1.4 or 1.5 COLA? What was 1.4?
1.4.
COLA, and then this additional, which would come out of the American Rescue Plan money, Mary? So I'm supporting what he, no, I'm supporting what you're saying, but I'm saying, because these funds are not tax dollars. This is free money that's coming to us. And I understand, but not, not necessarily here. It's not coming out of our general fund. It's coming from the government. It's technically, technically to me and what other people see it as, this is, this is free money that's coming to us to be able to allocate to different projects and do things that we need to do. And I think before we move forward with any projects, the first people we need to take care of is our, is our front line, and that's our employees. So $500, so we can set aside almost, you know, 250,000 to give them a $500 bonus? They would really appreciate that. So that's the only thing that I wanted to put out there with the American funds is, let's really, you know, continue to support our employees and add that extra $500. I mean, who wouldn't want an extra $500, especially during COVID? Gas, like you said, the prices are going up. Outside of this is separate from what we're actually doing with the, our budgeted money. This is, thank you, the administration, let's go ahead and give this money out. So that is what my thought process is when it comes to raises.
Mary, I asked you when I walked in the meeting if you would give me that, how much would a 2% versus the 1.4% cost?
For the general fund, it'd be that $120,000. And for the other, all the other funds, it's, you've got to give that 500, $100. So 120,000 for the all.
Do y'all have the hopes, Mayor?
Well, my thought is, is the most important thing that we've been able to do during this whole COVID process is make sure, unless I'm mistaken, that nobody was furloughed or let go, that this city continued the 470, 480 range of employees while other cities, because of the fact they did not have sufficient fund balance, et cetera, were not able to do that. So the most important thing I see, our relationship with our employees, is to let them know that they are employed here and we've got the money to keep them employed. So, you know, I think we're talking about three or four different things, and we might want to wait till the end of the budget process to decide on that. And we'll be able to, something might come up in another department, a capital improvement, et cetera, that we, these are the big decisions we make. Presently, I think equitably that everybody did sustain themselves with the job of the city, that the 1.4 and the 2.1 is reasonable. Now, I'm a little concerned that, and I'm glad you asked questions, that I have no idea how many, how many folks could qualify, but out of 480 employees, 20 to 40, being able to qualify for 2.1, sounds more like a, I thought there would be more.
Right. And so when it's budgeted?
I don't know how many more, maybe 100, I don't know.
Right. And when it's budgeted, it's budgeted on, am I wrong on this, on the fact that it's possible that 480, so that's extra money sitting there right there? So if you budget it based on only knowing 20 to 40 people, you just said. It's... So we figured on a 2.1 for 480 employees? And only 20?
Also 1.4.
And this is? Every year. So we have extra money every year. I thought we had determined, we knew at this point what, what those dollars were.
Well, again, I'll just say that our employees are very valuable to us, and yes, we've been able to keep them at work, but you know what? They've worked for us, too. They have worked hard for us, and they're doing things that you and I don't want to do. I don't want to crawl in a hole full of sewer. I don't want to climb up a power line during an electrical storm. Now, I don't want to chase a guy down just pointing a gun at me. So they're valuable to us. We need to take care of our employees. We need to stop losing employees, especially police officers, to the sheriff's office and to other cities. There's nothing worse, when I was the department head, there was nothing worse than hiring an employee, training him, getting him trained, getting him certified, and then him moving over to Wilson, where he could get $8,000 a year or more money. And then we have to start the process over again.
Well, to that point, our last salary study was 2017? Is that right, Son? Yeah. So when, when do you think we should have another study done to see where we are?
We actually have one budgeted in this budget. Because by the time the study's performed, we received the results, and then you're already probably going to be into the next budget year cycle, getting prepared for that. So it's probably going to be the next by the time it takes access. Our goal was to do every five years, I think, because what we wanted to do is make sure that a new salary study was done so that every five years, you've got new data and salary grade adjustments are changed accordingly. Now, keep in mind, when we did the salary study, the goal and objective was the cost of living adjustments move everybody's bands up, which is what we have done. It is our hopes that there's not going to be a huge amount of compression and grade-related changes in this next upcoming salary study, because all of those salaries should probably adjust along with the pay grades associated with the position that people are filling. So that's the whole intent of it.
So Mary, the CPI index for extraction of stimulus is 1.5 right now?
1.4. We believe that it's somewhere between 100 and 200. Because any, I think, 12-month period, so we could be somewhere between 2020 to, January 2020, 19 to 20, I'm sorry, we'd be somewhere between 2020, so we pulled that out of the game.
But I think you're going to see a huge increase in this coming year.
Yeah.
Yep. Probably be in the 3% bracket.
3.5, something like that.
Yeah, 3.5. So then the question would be next year, which, you know, that board has to weigh in that decision. If you're going to do a cost of living adjustment to keep, keep up with what the inflationary cost is, are for goods and services and everything else, you may be looking at 3.5% as the cost of living. It may be that it might not be a merit year. It may be you accumulate on top of that. So that's, that's the decisions the board has to make.
So, you know, not to beat the dead horse, the only thing I want to say is, I understand what you're saying, Mayor, that we have been able to, through this pandemic, keep our employees, not furlough them and that, but we don't know their personal situations. And so that's the only thing that concerns me, is even though they get up and come to work every day, we don't know if their lights are getting ready to be cut off. So I just think if we have this money that's not necessarily in here and is coming from the American Rescue Plan, I think we can set aside that money to be able to at least give them, give them that, that type of bonus. So I do agree with you. I agree with both of you. I just think that's a decision at the end that we really have to decide.
Sir, are you going with the 1.4 and the 2.1 with that?
I'm going to wait to hold my thoughts.
All right.
All right. So we'll go back to the water fund, and we'll try to, we'll try to keep, I know we've already presented, or the department heads have pretty much presented, so we're just, I think they're here more to answer any kind of questions the board may have, more so than anything, just so we can keep it rolling, because we have a lot of departments, a lot of things to cover. It may be that y'all want to just specifically go to items that you don't see or want to see in the budget, and we can do that.
Water, first, for sewer.
Water.
I tell you what, Mayor, I'm going to give you some general comments for the water resources as a whole, because a lot of what applies to water applies to sewer as well. And then open it up, as Mark said, any questions. Largely, we were able to put together a balanced budget for both the water and sewer fund that addressed all of our concerns and goals that we'd outlined at our workshop earlier in the year. With that, a few things that I will note as we move into FY '22. While we have come out of the COVID situation, I feel like very healthy in the water resource department. We've done a very good job of managing that. We've had some challenges, but we're doing well. We're starting to see some kind of trickle-down issues from supply and demand, whether that's labor, whether that's materials, whether that's contractors. I feel like that will be an issue that will continue to squeeze us a little bit moving in FY '22. Long and short of that is, the cost of doing business will be a little bit more, just general supply and demand, with a huge demand on our regional labor force, our regional supplies, materials. It's just going to be tougher to get stuff done. Our dollar's not going to go as far as it has in previous years. The other thing we're starting to notice, and I think this is a great thing, is the regional economy seems to be doing very well, especially here in Craven County. Growth and development is moving along at a very rapid pace, much faster than it has anytime I can say in the last 10 years. Great thing. What that has done is pushed our, our resources to almost a capacity level at this point. Not so much our infrastructure resources. Those are in great shape, plenty of water and sewer capacity. This is more of our personnel resource. We're starting to bump into capacity issues, dealing with project coordination with new contractors coming in, new projects. Utility locates is becoming an issue for us. Those are the, in North Carolina, every time somebody's ready to excavate, you've got to call 811, you've got to pretty mark some flags out, let you know something's on the way. Because of all the work going on, those, those services within the department are really at a capacity level right now. And on the forefront, we have some additional work we know is coming with the NCDOT work in James City later this summer into this fall will get kicked off, which will be another, you know, draw on those resources. And then also the possibility of the MetroNet group coming in later this fiscal year. So all that, I say all that to say that right now, we've got a balanced budget with no increases to staff, no increases to water and sewer rates proposed for FY '22. However, depending on what some of those additional loads look like as we get a little further into the fiscal year and see what those look like, we may have to circle back and talk about the need for additional resources to help manage those additional demands. With that, I really just opened up any questions you may have regarding the water and sewer funds in general. I won't try to go line item by line item. It's essentially a pretty standard budget. You will notice little increases and little decreases in percentage. The increases are mainly for cost of material, cost of service going up, we anticipate. The few decreases you're seeing there are largely related to places where we had one-time expenditures last year that aren't represented this year, so the cost goes down a little bit. Not, that's not representative of the cost of doing business going down, it doesn't reflect the one-time expenditure from last year. So we have to take any questions regarding either fund.
Joy?
Yes, sir.
We have a lot of pipes that's burst and water's constantly running. And who's paying for that versus a resident that would have that same problem? That probably couldn't afford the paper that runs in the water. Is that something that you think we need to outsource when we have that type of problem? Or do we have the manpower in-house to take care of that situation? Can you break that down and explain it to us?
Yes, sir. We run three construction crews that will, made up of four to six guys typically, that will handle all of our sewer, sewer main breaks, sewer line collapses, service line issues, water main breaks, water line issues. It ebbs and flows. Typically, we can take care of those things in a very quick fashion. It does take time, though. As I mentioned, the utility locate process before, when we find a leak, we can't just go fix it. The first step is to call the 811 service and get it located. That takes up to five days, five business days, so they don't count weekends, they don't count holidays, before all that gets located and we can go out there and start excavating. We're starting to see, this is a regional issue. We're starting to see some issues even with the 811 service in that we'll make our typical call into 811 to get cable and gas located. And because those, those resources didn't stretch thin in other places, Greenville and Fayetteville, that it may take those guys six, seven, eight days to come and show us where the gas mains at. Until that, until we know that, we can't legally excavate. So regionally, we're starting to have a drain on the resource, and because of that, I think you're going to see some minor delays and issues just like that on weekends. But I do feel like we have a very capable workforce that can take care of our standard water and sewer issues very quickly.
So how many jobs are completed in a month?
We completed 21,000 water and sewer work orders in the, in the last fiscal year.
I'm talking about in one, like, two months? One month or two months?
A little, a little under 2,000 work orders a month is what our water and sewer crew did. And that's a combination of everything from fixing a water main, fixing a water service leak, unclogging a sewer service pipe, work on our sewer bid stations, run the whole plethora of what we do with water resource.
What is the age and condition of your equipment?
We've done a good job of, from a capital improvement perspective, replacing our fleet equipment, our vehicles, our back trucks. We have a new back truck in the budget this year. The stuff we need to operate, we've done a good job of replacing that. We've also budgeted in excess of $1 million every year for the last 10 years in rehab and replacement of water and wastewater infrastructure in the field. We're doing a good job of clipping, you know, clipping along, replacing stuff in the field. However, you know, Mark was able to find through the city hall renovation, an old water system, sewer system map in the city hall attic this year that was from 1893. It shows you how old some of our infrastructure is. It went in in 1893. That's the start of the system.
You saved those, didn't you?
Yes, ma'am. We're working on a framing plan right now.
Okay, good.
So we've got a very old system. That's one of the, you know, one of the things that comes with being one of the work on as old as cities. We've got one of the work on as old as... as older cities, we've got one of the work on as oldest water and sewer systems.
Is it any sometime that I would like to just take a look and see what y'all have and how often you go through equipment? I'm just curious.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to do that. Thank you.
Hey, on the note of...
Jordan, how is the 811 funded?
811 funded, off the top of my head, I honestly don't know. We do not provide a direct contribution. We don't do a direct contribution. We don't go out of from the utilities. And there's no cost to the users of 811. However, by general statute, we are required to provide the service. So 811 is largely just a clearinghouse. So you as a homeowner, you as a contractor, make a phone call, say, I'm going to work on this block. All 811 really does is take that one phone call and then call eight different utilities and say, you need to go locate the area. They manage the clearinghouse of it. They don't perform any of the actual locates. The utilities are responsible for self-locating, either, either with their own staff or through a contractor.
So the delay that you're seeing, is it coming from the administrative side of 811 or is it coming from the actual utilities making the locates?
The best I can understand it, it's the lack of locators. There's only so many people in the region and eastern part of the state that, that perform the service. And I think there's been a huge draw, you know, from some fiber companies coming into different areas. That creates a, a huge deficit in, in labor very quickly. We're seeing it now. We are, like I said, we are at our capacity level right now with just typical development in town, along with one fiber contractor that's running three boring crews. That alone is pushing us to capacity.
Thank you.
I think the only question I have is, is when we get into the accounting end of the MetroNet and you got areas of town that, you have local power lines not underground or you have due versus the city, or how are you going to expense the?
That's more Charlie, I think.
Well, I mean, it's a lot of water, sewer and power. How is that going to expect some expense back?
Unfortunately, with utility locates, we are required by general statutes to provide the utility locate service at no charge. We can't charge for utility locates.
But I'm hearing a big end of 2.5 million. So it's big enough figured it, if the city needs to make policy on that or if there is not policy, I won't, I don't want, I would not want to see 2.5 charged to the electric fund. I would want to be effectively charged between the departments.
Well, we would pay, you know, by the time we pay for the people to locate and do all that, our cost would be about $2 million.
So there's not the, the money from the infrastructure? That's what infrastructure is because we're coming in and we're upgrading the broadband.
We're hoping that we can spend. Well, that's part of the American...
Outside of the American, there's a grant. I'll forward it to you guys in an email, but there's broadband, there's those grants that specifically we'll be able to cover. And since we're a municipality...
But I think what the mayor's talking about going forward, if anybody else, let's say they come down the road, do we now have policy? I don't know by law that we can have a policy. I don't know that the state would allow us.
I think in retrospect, on several occasions, the board all have looked back and guided the, the staff or some inequities in the way things have been expensed. And I just want to make sure we're on top end of, not the back end of it.
We'll definitely take a look at any avenue we have through general statute, but to best my understanding, the general statute basically reads, you call, we locate, and that's it. Whether that's on a big complaint or a treaty.
Say right here, you got water, sewer, electric, and it's $10,000 to do all that down this Lori, Lori Road or factory. So how are you going to expense that?
We've got, we've got water and sewer staff that perform the water and sewer locates, comes out of water and sewer funds. The electric utility has a contractor that locates the electric utility and the city-owned fiber. So that contractor will locate those, that bill comes to electric funds.
So is that going to be $3,300 per department?
It's depend, the, the charge is, is in relation to the work. So in some places, there may not be any water, sewer or electric, you may only have one or the other.
Makes sense, that makes sense.
Yes. So the way it's set up now, the cost is, the direct cost is expensed directly to each fund. So it's, it's already, already set up to pay its fair share, each fund to pay its fair share.
Now, I know we have general statute, but are, are we for sure that we're not able to create a policy stricter than what the normal statute is? Because, I mean, if they're coming in, yes, it's a benefit to us and our, and our citizens, but for us to have to pay almost 2.5 million, just hypothetically, I mean, that, there's got to be some sort of, you know...
There's the man he's going to tell you.
There's a couple different parts to this. When any kind of service provider comes in, they'll choose to rock with it, change the structure, give the overhead and the grid ground case, Mr. Hughes was talking, he also about that situation. If you have an obligation, have you going to go out and mark our facilities, so they can save people? That is not really, not whatever that cost, obligation is possibly used as a reason for me to... And at this point in time, you don't know how much of it can be underground, what base the bill go, they may crawl in, 300 locates today and 1,000 locates tomorrow. And you have an obligation to clear the, you know, 35 they go. So Mr. Hughes and I are both looking at this on an ongoing basis. Mr. Stevens has been involved in other conversations with other municipalities and building crews, trying to get heads up and some sort of gauge of how MetroNet works, so we can forecast some of this. The other part of it, when they go underground, they will hit our utilities and they will cause damage and we'll have to sort that out and chase down liabilities and manage all of that work. There's a cost to do that. How much will they hit? How often will they hit? It's a guess. And it's been really difficult for me to try to put a forecast on how much the utility will be exposed to. I've been saying about $2.5 million of cash flow to expect every year that there's a year going in, in the installation. In addition to that, we talked about the overhead. So locations that they don't want to go underground, they'll want to put it on the utility poles, which are in the city's right side way. And there has to be enough clearance on those poles. And those poles have to be designed to carry the load in the size of the conductor, the fiber that they're installing. All of that has to be engineered. And after this engine, well, first of all, it has to be engineered to see if it'll fit or not. Then after it's engineered, you have to make a decision. Any of it has to be re-engineered. And then after you decide, well, it needs to be re-engineered, what's the price to re-engineer every different pole that they touch? They're all different. Some poles have less equipment on, some poles are very expensive to replace. Then you go back to MetroNet and say, well, here's the cost of this makes, make ready work. And they'll make the decision on whether or not they want to go that route. That's a lot for the city to manage with their current workflows and growth that's going on in this community. I don't foresee that we have the staff to support this space. So as I said before, Mr. Hughes and Mr. Stevens and I have been talking about this, keeping our eyes on it. As MetroNet comes forward and we build a plan, we probably will be back to talking about our plan, how much cash flow we need to anticipate, talking across Greenville, I believe they're going to have a lot of, how many dollars?
What are the number of men that you're looking at that, that you would have the heart?
Right now on the electric side, that's how I go to more parties, what I can ask people. And I've got to get that figured out. I've got to figure out how the workflows, how, how we have to interact with that. Public works probably needs to be part of that conversation. They're probably going to listen to this and work. Take, for example, let's go to Birmingham. They come through to Birmingham and they go underground. They're going to have pits where they start their boring and they're going to have a pit on the other side where they have that. They're going to discuss the yards, discuss the lawns, and they're going to pull the wire and they're going to, they're going to grow. And that relationship from the customer call, when the homeowner says, I don't like what happened, we're going to get that decision. So should we ramp up, should we have these stuff, we can go out there and kind of work with the contractor, be in the neighborhood, kind of put out some of those fires forward to escalate? Those are the things we're discussing. We don't have a built-in plan yet, nobody wants to come. Hope they are, we think they are. And if you do on the land, then what place are we going to?
I want to make a simple mention on Mr. Hughes, some idea what will be coming and also how like, in corporate, we need to know who calls, things in our, our current budget. So the current budget is based on our normal operations, the idea that if and when this MetroNet group comes in and wants to get operational and functional area, we'll have a lot better idea of some of these unknowns and get to come back and have a much more in-depth and better discussion with the board about what we think those ongoing costs are going to be and what additional resource needs to do for the utility at the heart.
There's just way, way too many what ifs right now for us to be budgeting $2.5 or $3 million in our utility funds based on a bunch of what ifs. If we had something solid, we'd be budgeting for it in part B. But, you know, if, if we get to the point where we got to have those discussions with the board that they need $200, you know, $1,000 a month or something like that to be able to do this, then those are good discussions to have because that means growth happening or that means that you've got something going in the ground. So obviously they'll keep you abreast of that as, as the time arrives.
The good news, the MetroNet group is working in a couple of eastern Ohio County communities right now where Mr. Richard and I have good contact, we're in weekly contact with those folks, trying to learn from, from their lessons that they're, they're getting caught off guard here and there. So hopefully by the time we do have to come back and have the conversation, we have some really good answers to all the questions and have a really good final vote.
I just want to make sure everybody realizes that my vote is to not give the farm away that the liquid assets of the city, but at the same time, from a, a one gig versus the current COAX, this is fiber optic, a 1-1 upload, download, a lack of sincere interest in our community by the present provider, I don't see where we have any choice but to go forward. And I look at this as a fiber optic landline of 50 years. And 50 years, an upfront cost, $2.5 million to, to be able to afford our, our citizens the opportunity to have for reliable security, safety, health, educational opportunities, it's a small amount of capital upfront investment. And I only say that because I don't want to myself go into a meeting with MetroNet and start formulating them about the fact on my part that I think their costs upfront permitting y'all are unrealistic. I want, I want them to come here and I want the city to do everything that Fayetteville and Jacksonville and Rainwood do it to make sure that they know they're welcome here and that we desperately need them as part of our overall, from framing, everything else we're doing in our community that we desperately need. I know that provider of their, of their quality.
Any additional water resource questions?
Are you going to stay in about the same pace with the Black Creek aquifer and the mixed blend that you got? Is that like 50/50 right now?
Yes, sir. We're currently permitted for a 50% withdrawal. We've got a temporary permit. We're, by regulation, we're supposed to be at a 75% withdrawal. I've spoken with the state folks. We've still got a couple more years left temporary permit and they've recently reintroduced some language into our North Carolina administrative code that covers our withdrawal amounts that would allow us to continue the temporary permit county in perpetuity. So everything looks real good in the aquifer at our 50% withdrawal rates. We don't see any reason we don't have any need to change that moving forward.
Reason I'm asking is, you know, obviously the cost of, cost of goods sold is very important if you're getting it out of Castellanae or Black Creek. So you don't have to come back and say, get out of Black Creek and have a lot more chemical off or anything like that.
No, no, sir. It should be, like I said, we've got a permit that guarantees our withdrawal limits for at least in the two years and moving forward, they've added some language in through the legislation in North Carolina that will help make that a long-term proposal for us as well.
Any questions?
Jordan, just want to thank you and your staff, all the hard work that y'all do to keep in our city's water and sewer production is going for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you all very much and thank you all the board and mayor for your support as well.
Thank you.
A quick question before you leave, and I failed to ask this earlier, but it's a little forecasting on your point. You know, 10 years ago, when I first came to city hall, 10 plus years ago, you know, we were concerned about capacity. And as we saw growth, and of course, the growth kind of slowed down at that point. But where are we at capacity wise? Do you see that in the next three years, five years, we're going to have to increase capacity? We're seeing a lot of, of building and of course, Blue Water Rise, Carolina Colors now is building out, and we're going to have, like Tyler, I mean, everywhere in the city. Are you going to be coming back here and asking us any?
From a system capacity standpoint, all the pipes to get you from point A to point B, those are where we're going to jump on next that we've known about, we've planned for, we've got some programs in place. We've got large projects that are working, we're permitting right now, we're hoping to get kicked off this summer, then we'll fix some of those. From a treatment perspective, we do an annual water system update to the state every year that we have to forecast. At this point, we're forecasting 2060. Good news is we, we're not anticipating to run out of domestic water supply even in 2060. So our current water treatment plant will service well for many years to come. Our wastewater plant, a little different situation, they were running about 4 million gallons on average out of a, a plant that's permitting for 6.5 million gallons a day. And we're starting to see some issues through our wetter, wetter weather is causing problems like this past winter, we had so much rainfall. Not so much a loading from new development is getting us, it's aging infrastructure. So that's where in the years to come, we're looking at ways to reinvest and rehabilitate some of our aging wastewater infrastructure. The timing is perfect. We have a large debt load that is coming off in fiscal year '23. We make our last payment for our wastewater treatment plant, and that'll free up a couple million dollars a year of money that we can put forth to rehab and replacement of aging sewer infrastructure. We've already got plans in place of where that money's going. So we've got a pretty good plan for the next 10 years, I think. If everything stays stable with, with growth and development in the city, you know, the rate should be the same, stable as well.
I want to ask you a question then. You got 6.5 million gallons, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, at some point, you'll hit you at SOC and all that, but with the equalization basin and the grit reduction in, in James City before it comes to New Bern, do you factor in the longevity of that plant before it needs to be expanded that you're, you're already doing first phase cleaning of the, of the sewer work in James City? Does that factor in that, that we technically have 6.8 million gallons if you consider the refinement that's goes on prior to it, four main and the new one?
We get some small benefit from removing some small solids, seven, seven at the equalization basin. However, everything is based on the, the liquid that actually flows through the end of the pipe. That's what you're permitting for during the day, how much liquid you discharge through the end of the plant process. And the liquid, the liquid part of that's really where we have the problems with ion ion as well. So while we do get some benefit from the EQ basin, it's really not enough to add capacity to our, our plant limit. We do see the benefit of that. We've had a lot of benefit in equalization basin with system pressures, operational efficiency since implementation. It's a critical part of our, our full build-out program in the County of Tri-Pennsylvania as well.
So you don't get any consideration from the state on what they would issue at SOC when, when you get near that?
No, sir. Everything, all of our state permit is based on end of pipe discharge, what comes out of the finished product pipe at the wastewater treatment plant. Doesn't matter how much comes in, it's how much goes out.
All right. I hear you. Or anybody else?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, it's time we ask Charlie to come up. He can highlight real quickly the electric fund and then we'll move on to solid waste after that.
I want to thank Mr. Hughes for that update. That was very good. Unfortunately, mine's going to be somewhat redundant. The electric fund is pretty much following similar to what water and wastewater funds experience. I think what you're looking at is reflective of a balanced revenues and expenses. We're also considering rising costs of goods and services. We have good fill rates on our staff vacancies right now. That's part of this budget. Regional growth causing requirements for new infrastructure, so that increase our capital costs of, those are factored in. System-wide maintenance and repairs, which are ongoing, that's part of this budget, as well as some emerging projects. NZDOT, particularly James City area, heading out towards Havlock and electric vehicle chargers that we spoke before, that's emerging project and as well as a Golden Leaf grant project that we received to raise and relocate some mandated electrical infrastructure. Not... Not reflective in the budget are things that we, we talked about previously and may be back here as the year evolves, wanting to circle back with you further to discuss it. Our resources are at maximum capacity as Mr. Hughes mentioned, electric departments following the same rate of growth and if, if we're not able to, to continue that, then you'll see a possible drop in our level of service. Nobody wants that. So we're monitoring that very closely. As our growth continues, we'll, we'll keep you up and advise you.
Personnel?
Personnel.
Personnel.
Correct.
So that's what your, the resources that you need is personnel?
Yes.
Are you still having a hard time finding linemen? You know, I know there's a lot of competition out there. We're seeing that, you know, Duke and others, but right now we seem to be okay.
We're okay as of today. My vacancies are in good space right now. We're doing our own, but can change with.
Where are your linemen going to? What other job do they?
Duke.
What reason?
Catch.
Hey. Oh, so a 2.5% cola would certainly help that situation, wouldn't it?
It would.
Thank you.
Well, wouldn't that, if I walked right into that, didn't it? How are you doing?
What'd you say, Charlie?
I walked right into that.
One more question, relative to that. Did you ask for additional positions that weren't funded? For these? Thank you.
Staffing is balanced. Again, back on what's not reflected in the budget that we may be talking about more this year is a need for electric system, system capacity improvements. We talked about that in the past. I'm still looking on that. The battery energy storage system, I'm looking on that. And as we discussed earlier, the MetroNet is emerging and that could cause a financial strain, burden on the utility. As we sort that out, we'll be back to advise you on what's happening there.
Charlie, I believe we did revenue bonds for AMI. Is that correct from how we've done it?
I believe they were revenue.
Do we know when they're paid in for?
Mr. Hogan and I knew those about a month or two ago. They're coming up very quick. I don't have the information in front of me. I would say before 2025, they all roll off. I can get you that answer. That's about the, a brief summary of the budget that can come up with.
I, I want to tell you, Charlie, I've had the opportunity to meet with, is it Mike Harper?
Yes, sir.
One of your project managers for the Airport Road project?
Yes, sir.
And he's great. He kept me posted the whole time of everything that was going on. So I was able to keep the residents out there posted as to what days, what things were happening. And I appreciate him doing that. It meant a lot to me and to my constituents. So they would know, not necessarily turn left, but turn right the next morning.
Our pleasure. Pass on your words to Mr. Harper.
I have a question. So mine is a little like unorthodox. So my thought is we go through your budgets every year and to be realistic, there may be some things that you've asked for that you haven't gotten, but just being in the position that you are in the field and your expertise, are there things that you've thought about that could progress our city in regards to being innovative that you would want to bring but haven't brought because we may not have the funding? I just want to kind of with the department heads, think about, you know, this pandemic has changed us, the whole world on how we do things. So have you, you know, sitting home like, oh man, maybe that is something where we, I can save some money or there's another city that's doing that. So do you ever have any of those ideas or anything like that where you felt it could be impactful to the city and you may not have brought it up because you think it may not have been funded or any type of initiatives?
My mind races all the time with my own thoughts, thoughts that I'm stimulated with as I see and connect with others in the industry. I think for the most part, you heard my concerns and that's capacity. I'm working on that and everybody has been very supportive of listening to me and being patient with developing plan to fund that. Battery energy storage is emerging as well. That could really help us with some cost avoidance. Staffing, I mean, we're at the mercy of our, our human resources and to train them for a couple of years from a lineman or any other position and get them developed and then have somebody offering five dollars more in another city ahead of industry competing with utility, it's hard.
Thank you.
Charlie, how about, how about training, training and recruiting for linemen? What sort of licenses or certificates do they require to be able to do that job?
We have a lineman career development program that is endorsed by the Department of Labor and supported and administered through electricities. They help us acquire the technical classes and the agenda curriculum that's likely to go through. We can hire, at the top of, of that career development program, we call it journeyman position. We could, we can hire a journeyman position in today, if we could find one and pay them. Or we could hire one in that has no experience and that we think has some technical aptitude and will be a good match for our industry. And we can train them, put them through the lineman career development program from what we call a groundman position all the way up through the journeyman. If one was to, if an employee was to be really motivated and really go after it, they could probably get through all their bookwork and all their minimum hours in five to six years. One of my concerns is that our crew leaders are all journeymen, they've been journeymen for two years. They're, I've got four, seven retiring within under five years. I need journeymen that not get their journeyman card today. I need journeymen that have a journeyman for 10 years before they're ready to be pretty good. And that's what I've been working on over the last couple of years is to get those folks trained, get them the experience and kind of stack that, that, that journeyman level of our, of our organization. And it's been, it's been a challenge, but the market's competitive and I've got my eye on the ball of making sure we stay in constant development and pay attention to our attrition and we have succession planning in place. Am I answering the question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know you're on top of it. I just felt like it'd be good to kind of share that with everyone. From a, a global standpoint, is there funding in your budget for recruiting and to pay for that training program that you're talking about or is that outsourced to a different?
That's all funded in the budget. They send them to travel training.
So tell me this, Charlie, what is the difference between the training or if a guy coming from somewhere else about their own training? Are they doing the same thing that we do in training their guys, give them level of training?
Yes.
So if all the guys need to hear, you know, they have the training, so they just speak up the pad?
Yes.
So leaning back to what Alderman, Bobby Astor is saying is so realistically, where do you feel that we are competitive or we aren't competitive in regards to the salaries? And you can, you straightforward?
Our, our scales are probably within range, but we would have more flexibility of where to decide in this case. Flexibility of work. Employees' incentive scale. So, so market analysis may say a groundman is to be between this pay and this pay, bottom of scale, top of the scale. And I think we're probably pretty close here to where we compare our industries. But when I go out to the market and you look, the employees are not at the bottom of scale. They're mid-scale, top of the scale. And those other competition I'm up against, they're making those offers from the top side, mid-side of that scale.
Well, they're doing that just to be able to get them front of you.
Yes.
So to what Alderman Odom was saying in regards to the training, there's no stipulations in our contract kind of, you know, you get to know, you sign on both, but you got to stay for so long? We don't have that?
We don't. I've, I've thought about it, but I've never taken it all the way to present it to anybody and see if it has mattered, but there are possible ways to consider incentivizing folks to stay, but fighting to do with money.
Yeah, so that, that's what I mean in regards to bringing something, you know, out because you don't know how many votes you're going to get in regards to that because at the end of the day, we need, we need linemen, you know what I'm saying? We need these positions and if we're training them and they're going to leave because we didn't give them five dollars more, that's a problem with us. We need to fix that because we want people to stay. So.
It's not just here in New Bern. I mean, the municipal electric industry, it's the same conversation across the country. You compete against investor elements, you compete against universities that have their own electric distribution system, you compete against contractors, you compete against the military bases that have their own distribution system. So there's, there's competition for us and it's, all the municipalities across the board in general have not been able to achieve those same pay levels that your investor and utility contractors have.
I think one of the big issues you run into too, it's, it's hard to fight the 250 and five dollar an hour more, but oftentimes it's shortsightedness in their part in not evaluating what the true picture is because the city contributes 5%, whether you contribute or not to 401K, 5% of their salary, $70,000 employee has $3,500 a year they're putting in. So that $10,000 extra dollars that they're making is now $7,000. Then you take into account what our retirement system package is. The city contributes some, the employee contributes some, and they have retirement for the rest of their life. They leave Duke Energy, they don't have retirement for the rest of their life. I can guarantee you that. The other thing they don't take into account is, is the health insurance. Health insurance costs, the city has a very, very, very beneficial plan to employees. Even though upfront, they have to pay for a certain deductible amount, in the end, it is a very rich plan, if you want to call it, compared to most private sector folks. So if, if you take into account the benefits, it, it's really a lot more of a comparable study. But we know as many as, as, as y'all know, out there in the business world, somebody gets a quarter dollar an hour, they're liable to jump ship. You know, if it's five dollars an hour, that's hard to turn down. When it's, you know, 2,080 hours a year, that's $10,000 when they do that math, but the benefits are big, just to say.
The other thing we try to educate our employees on is continually remind them what their life is like. And most of our employees, all of our employees go home at night. They're not on the road traveling. They're not living in hotels. Of course, we have our storm duties and we have callouts at all hours of the night, but it's a good place if you want to raise your family and you want to take your daughter to dance and you want to take your boys to softball practice, probably get you home at midnight. So that's, that's a message that I constantly try to remind our employees. It's, it's up to them to decide what quality of life they're looking for, but in what stage of their life they're in. When you're, you know, 20 years old and a groundman, five dollars an hour looks, you know, I'm taking it. There's no talking to them. And they, and they can't see the 30-year investment or 20-year investment.
Mark or Sonya, do, do we provide an option for employees? So if an employee says, I don't want your 5% retirement, do they have an option to receive that in lieu of their retirement?
I don't think so, no. No, we've never had that. Yeah, the, the 401K is option, well, that, that can be optional, but right now it's not optional. We contribute regardless. The state retirement system is mandatory by the state system that we have to contribute that. The employee has to contribute that, their share of it. But all the other benefits are, are pretty much offered. And you know, there's, there's things that you can also look at, which is, you know, we backed our plan down to a 70/30 plan, but I mean, you know, there's employee shares and all that other stuff which they don't have to do. A lot of, a lot of private sector, they have to, their employees have to contribute a portion or, or whatever of that health insurance cost. We don't require that. So it, it's, like I said, like Charlie has mentioned, it's, it's difficult for a 20 to 25-year-old who's making five dollars an hour offered somewhere else to see the long-term picture often happens.
Charlie, real quick, my favorite, how are we with pay as you go? How, how was that process? How many people now or system-wise?
Last update I got, you're about 65?
Eighty-five.
Oh, yes. I'm so excited.
Eighty-five total customers?
No. Eighty-five total customers?
It's good news.
You thought it was 85%?
Yes. Oh, my goodness.
Eighty-five customers.
There's good news. I don't want to steal Ms. Hogan's thunder if she were planning on discussing any of it, but we have been taking a hard look at what it would, how could we motivate the folks to get on that? And we've had conversations. We've reached out to other communities that have good utilization rates and we've been trying to learn from them. One of the key things that sticks out in my mind is some of these utilities have gotten away from being our plans of life. The pay as you go is a family's kind of life.
It is. I'm trying, everybody watching.
You don't get another option?
Pay as you go.
I don't know if we're ready to roll that out to the board at this time, but that's something we have, we have discussed and we are working internally on and hopefully we'll have some recommendations forthcoming.
How many of those 85 came because they chose that option versus the deposit?
We don't even require a deposit.
We do regard policy, it's probably just your line to be, when I'm not doing a specific line, but that's probably just all the way to your line. And then you got people that kind of like, well, you know, you choose to be a little longer.
So, okay, so you don't require a deposit to get on pay as you go?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, that's the one tier you offer if you don't want to pay your deposit and you don't pay for it. Because it tells you there's no risk to it. If they stop paying, they'll be this kind of, they don't, they don't build on their line.
So it's, it's fair to say the more stringent your deposit, deposit policy would be, the more folks you would have participate on pay as you go?
We're also, correct, because pay as you go software also allows everyone just to be able to choose their music, even if you choose non-juiciest pay as you go, they're also kind of all off type of, you know, downloading on your phone and you can follow you and use it, even if you're still willing to pay and hold that one. We're just trying to be people that are going to have a review and maybe a different social life.
Do we have commercials going on, on our channel, our pet channel? I might have to do one because I don't understand. I love it. Seriously, like just being able to do it, I, it's, I don't know. Isn't anyone else on here at pay as you go? Did you?
They were supposed to set me up to test on it.
I'm going to need y'all to be tested on pay as you go. Oh, okay. So I had mayor, I apologize.
Who else? Hold on, it looks like all of that rolled off.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Do you understand?
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll roll into the solid waste fund. Should be fairly simple. The solid waste is a combination of our sanitation as well as our leaping limbs. So at this point, I'll turn it over to George to present that. If you have any questions.
The Blamish Division of our department, the budget we have for you is really just an increase in our contractual obligations through GFL and that is reflected in that. We do have two capital expenditures. We are semi, every two years, we're rotating a route truck out and replacing a route truck. And we've also have money set aside for the purchase of a stump shear which will allow our leaping limb facility to shear margin of breed to put into the driving zone. And that way, we're not sitting in an off-site land building, chipping through some. And that's really the overview of this, we have no other changes other than annual rate increase on the contract.
I think this is year?
This will be our last.
Last year before it needs to be contracted.
Last year before it needs to be contracted, it'll be bid out again.
Last year.
Be the last year of the contract currently, so it'll be bid out again.
We have an option. We could renew for one more if we wanted.
So, we have a question, have a question. Just, I was just curious, 'cause it didn't match up, um, and that was my question to you. So, I wanna make sure I'm reading the right page, two thirty-five, and where it says, "Basic Service Residential." Is that correct? It says it went up one point eight percent. I thought we had a one point six percent increase. Have you stayed for, I have in mind a one point six. So, in your description in the front, it said operating budget one point six, increase in contracted services. But yet, the amount we're showing for basic service residential was one point eight percent. I didn't know if that was a typo, or if, um...
The, the marginal rate increase now going through fifty-one and a half percent. I'd like to verify that.
But, so then this would be long growing from eight, so I don't know, correct, a different rate?
The one point eight reflects the budgeted amount.
Excuse me?
Said the one point eight strictly as a percentage that is relative to the budgeted amount the manager's recommended versus, um, the current year revised budget is a one point eight percent increase. The, the, the contract calls for whatever the contract calls for. Uh, so, there, there may be, and, and I'm not, I'm merely speculating, Matt's not here. But it may be that they accounted for the one point six, gave it a little bit of extra because certain services get added throughout the year, whether they're community pickups, whether they're additional carts, additional whatever gets added, that is somewhat reflective of that.
So, it's not, the whole thing then isn't reflective on the contract that would be about...
No, not necessarily.
The one point eight is reflective of the difference between the manager's recommended and the current year revised budget.
Thank you.
We, um, we often talk about partnering with the county and finding some synergies there. Um, I spoke to a couple commissioners, and I think everybody remembers the grief they went through when they decided to cancel the recycling service, and then they backtracked and went back to it. And we've got these big containers, and it's once a, it's not once a month, it's once every four or five weeks. And everybody's gotta remember what week to take it out on. Um, I think this is an opportunity, and I actually spoke with, with, um, GFL for this as well, that maybe we need to have some conversations with the county commissioners to see. 'Cause I think they would probably be more than glad to get rid of that and let the city take that over. Because it's really within the city is where they, they heard the most feedback whenever they decided to cancel that. So, contract comes up next year, I think theirs is a couple of years out from that. Uh, but being it's the same supplier, I don't know if we could have some conversations maybe. Because, um, first of all, I think we probably need to get some clarity on what actually happens with recycles. If that, if the truth is that it doesn't actually get recycled, then we need to educate our citizens that it's, it's a waste of money. It's a feel-good type situation that it's not actually getting recycled, number one. Um, but if, if, if there is some benefit to that, you know, I think we probably need to take a look at, potentially, the city taking that service over. That way, we can manage that aspect of it, and we can negotiate something where it's not this huge bin that's once every four or five weeks. And you gotta remember to take it out, and you forget the next month. Because what's ended up happening, we all know, you're, people are putting trash in the recycling bin, and people are putting recycles in the trash bin. And at some point in time, I'm not sure how the money actually flows out, but it's probably a wash in the day. So, if there's an opportunity for us to, to be better partners with that, I think we should certainly look into it.
Um, to your, um, question, um, Odom, if, if that was something to, um, that, if that's something that would happen, does that mean that the city would take on the responsibility of the county getting going and going into the county and picking up as well, you're saying?
No, I think, I think what the county, the feedback that I've received is, they, the people in the county, the rural part of...
They don't care.
They don't wanna, they don't wanna recycle program anyways, just within the city. So, it's only the city that wants it, the city should...
I understand. Thank you. Okay?
It's cold. Turn it up a little.
Put the heat on.
Any other questions?
No heat.
Ms. Oden, I know that when that was all discussed, that the, the price that they negotiated, you know, you would be going weekly or monthly?
Oh, I'm not, I'm not picking one way or the other. I'm just saying that instead of the county managing, maybe we might have more leverage with our contract if we included recycling. And who knows? We could negotiate that with them now and say, "Within the city, what kinda deal can you give us if you're coming around more frequently, which is an added service?" But again, there needs to be some research done and find out if there's even any benefit to it.
I agree, 'cause that once, it really is once a month, though, and...
Maybe four weeks.
Right, but it builds up quick, I mean...
Um, if, if the board's made it up to it, we'll just go ahead and skip down to Public Works since George is at the table, if you wanna go ahead and do that since he's there, so he'll be done. Uh, so, Public Works begins on page, uh, one twenty-seven, uh, so we're, we're starting to get into the general fund items. Um, so, we'll go ahead and let George, uh, address the, all the different, uh, Public Works highlights, just a, a hundred thousand foot view. And if Ward has any kinda questions, they're, they're more than welcome to ask.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Which, um, since you have taken on a new position, what have you found out that you may need? How is your fit? Do you see you need new equipment to continue? Because what's gonna happen once this new project is completed?
We've actually had some discussion, for myself and Avery Smith, our Stormwater Superintendent regarding that. And in, in this budget, there is capital items, um, that we requested that better. We may tweak it as to actually the implementation of which piece of equipment we get. We requested a backhoe, um, had some additional conversation that possibly a different piece of equipment that would be better used to, um, follow behind what contractors have done on some of these ditches and canals. Um, and, and we're looking into that, and that may be brought back to you when we make that decision for that piece of equipment, rather than be a backhoe. We may be replacing it with a, a separate track cutter, smaller track cutter, ground pressure, with different types of cutting, whether it be long sickle or bush hog type of dents, that we can maintain some of these canal-like area ditch banks. Where we can't get side boys into them, the tractors are too big, the lane may not be margin up. But that type of piece of equipment, I think we can utilize in those areas. And Avery and I have had that discussion, Avery's leaves it, as of Saturday.
What about manpower? How many men do you have in, and who's coming up for retirement? And how many, um, what is it you call it? You have different, um, zones?
Right, well, attrition hasn't, hasn't, uh, seeped into our stormwater yet, so, um, most of the guys are of, uh, an age where we're not concerned with that right now. Um, you know, how many people we need, we will provide whatever level of service you staff for us. We, you know, we will, we're at full capacity. If you gave us more employees, we'd still be at full capacity. So, there's always work to be done for Public Works. Um, you know, it's just to what level you'd like that service to be, or we'll, we'll do that. And as of right now, we're doing as much as we can with the guys we have. Like I said, we'll, we have one position, um, in this budget that's coming up through the streets. So, we'll add that person, and we'll still provide as much as we can with the staff we have. Um, and I, I've answered your question.
Well, I mean, it's a lot of ditch cleaning, and, um, I had an opportunity, I don't have an opportunity to do it, I think, speaking of that. I had a chance to walk out with you and consult, uh, on choosing the areas that they're cleaning out. And that's, that's a lot. I mean, if you got like two or five crews out there cleaning, and you only have five bins, how many will from five bins be sixty-six miles of ditch cleaning, you know?
Well, hopefully, we're not having, we're not having, we're not having to clean them to the degree they are, because they're, they're remediating hurricane damage and hurricanes debris. So, once we get back to an open, an open channel, um, without trees and stumps and accumulated storm debris, we'll be in a better position to maintain those. Um, and I, I think we'll see also, as you go through the neighborhoods, where the contractors have cleaned the banks, cleaned the ditches. It's cleaned actually the freshman's backyard. And I think you'll see a lot of residents then being able to maintain ditch banks, which they may not previously have, had the money, the equipment, they may have been of an age they couldn't. And I think now, they'll be in a, in a state, they'll be more easily, uh, maintainable by the residents. So, we may not need to go into certain areas as often.
Well, Julie, one of the questions that I have in reference to the CAT A and CAT D work, um, and in our conversations that you and I spoke, and also Avery in Breakfast to the Water, um, my only concern is that there's certain areas, you and I talked about this, that has a lot of heavy vegetation, a lot of downed trees and stuff. And you, um, confirmed with me that that was part of the CAT A work. But the city, the contractor, which is Trader Construction Company, is waiting on permits because of some of the areas in the city dealing with the railroad.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do you know at what point that phase of the work will be actually started on? Because I'm...
As soon as we have the, the right-of-entry agreement with North Carolina Railroad and North Southern, they will go into those areas and do work.
So, then after, you know, and what I want to know is, because maybe I missed it, maybe I was looking too, too hard, but I know that we have a lot of that work of cleaning out the ditches and canals and all the debris and everything is under the FEMA funding. But after, like you said, after this thing, after this cleanup is done, is that something that your department would take on as a, a, a once-a-year, like maintenance to keep that, those areas free and clear? Or, I know that's a big discussion that we have to come back to the plan to talk about, but is that something that you foresee that may be possible for the city, or we would still have to have contractors?
It depends on what degree we need to go back to certain areas. If it was just, um, you know, if they've gone through an area, the canal's clean, and we have a limb fall out of a tree, our guys take care of that on a normal basis. We wouldn't need to have contractors additionally back in. The only way that I see we need contractors back in again, once all of this work is done, is if unfortunately, we have another hurricane at this level. And then, yes, our staff would need assistance from contractors, just because of the enormity of the debris in the ditches.
Well, I was with Harris tonight, where we spent a couple hours of the day looking at some things in your neighborhood. In this budget, I'm, I'm certainly not an accountant to be able to tell you. But obviously, fortunately, with systems, the member of the federal government is gonna do some things that probably the city general fund would be doing. So, the question is, is once all this work is done, on a yearly basis from, from here on out, you know, roundup doesn't actually just kill something, it's out of retardance. Are we gonna enter into some type of, 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 as-built type of, of empirical database of where these ditches are, what was done to them, what methodology for retard, retardation of the vegetation growth? As to where right now, I know in some places, we, we looked and observed the other day, we have eight-inch, twelve-inch diameter trees that are sitting on the banks. And at the same time, this is a tiptoe through the tubes. If there was one that you obviously do not want to damage that in-place erosion control that's there, and you don't want to overly round up it or any others I could, or, as to where you're, you're damaging the erosion control. But I think the board, the, the main problem with change in Dubin is the board has not ever been probably as, um, as concerned as they are now, particularly with Florence. And I think that in lieu of fact that, that we had a revenue digital realignment, so to speak, of the fee, we put that back in, and since we increased, well, about six, seven hundred thousand dollars. And that obviously, instead of having the fee to generate that, we put it in the general fund. Um, so, again, Oliver Harris, you, I think you had some concerns and...
Yeah, absolutely.
Oliver Harris.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I, I understand what, what Mr. Kinsey's saying, because, um, going around and, and going to some of the ditches, and this is not necessarily directed towards you, it's just the, the process, um, and the frustration of, you know, how the citizens feel. But I feel like we're up against the wall because we had that hurricane, um, we have this FEMA money. We can't go do extra in this ditch because it's gonna mess things up. So, you know, people that are watching, we are making sure that we are taking care of the ditches. But it's to a certain extent because we have the, the CAT A and D work. B, D, A, D?
D.
Okay. Um, but, you know, driving around, um, you know, with the, with the rain that we had, there's, there's ditches, especially over by the tracks, that, I mean, I can dip my toe in it, and the pumps aren't on. So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm at the point where, like I was saying about being innovative and, and things of that nature, what can we do as a board to rectify some of these situations outside of this FEMA funding? Because, I mean, if we need to, and this is me, if we need to go ahead and bid out more workers to, to get some of this work done that is not part of the CAT A and D, we need to do it, because people's yards are being flooded, um, and that, and that's something that is, has been consistent. But we need to try and rectify it so that it's not as bad as it is, you know? Because obviously, Mother Nature, you're gonna have, you know, flooding to a certain extent. God forbid, we never have another Florence. But, you know, not seeing that these, these, these pumps are on, or, or possibly not being, um, maintenance, you know what I'm saying? We, we need to figure that out. So, I, I feel like it's possible we may need more employees to do more work in regards to that. Um, and then, um, one of the things I, I was talking to the mayor about that I threw out there was, um, just maybe possibly being creative. I don't know if on your downtime, you wanted to do some research. But I felt like if we can find a plot of land that's in the center of wherever a lot of our problems are, and try to create some sort of engineering of, what is it, reverse osmosis? To be able to, you know, like, utilize that water, you know what I'm saying? Like, if we're able to do that and create, you know, good water, that's something that no one is doing, that I've ever heard of, but I know it's possible. Because that may fix some of the issues that we have, especially in these areas. So, I'm just, I'm all about making sure that we just try to be innovative and be progressive. There's so much, there's grant money out there, we have a grant writer, you know, we have a contract with her. Let's get these grants written. Like I said, it's not to you, it's just the general public and the board. Like, we have to figure this out. This is the foundation of the city. Like, P, I'm, we're going, and people's homes are sinking into the ditches. And that's a reflection on us. Who's gonna wanna purchase a house somewhere and their backyard is literally when I, you know, is going, like, no one's gonna wanna purchase houses here. So, we have to take care of the infrastructure. If you do these big projects and you get them done, then it's the responsibility of maintaining it. It's always supposed to be maintaining it. That's being progressive. We don't wanna get another hurricane, and then people's houses are floating in ditches. So, it's like, we, we may have to cut some corners to get this done outside of what's going on with FEMA. Because there's no way, there's no way that we can just continue to let this go on. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know what's growing in there. I mean, it's, it's terrible. It's terrible. The pipes, some of the pipes are just not big enough to flow the water. Like, we really have to look at this situation and really take care of it. Because a homeowner, I'm not paying no city taxes, and my house is floating in the back. I have a ditch at, at my house. I mean, we have to put ourselves in the position of homeowners and people that pay taxes and live here. We have to fix these ditches, because people have lost their homes during that hurricane. And maybe if we did a better job, whatever the case may be, it wouldn't have been as bad necessarily in some of these communities as it was. So, again, this is not towards anybody, towards anybody's work. I'm just saying, as a city, as a board, while we sit here, while we're doing this budget, we really have to make sure that with this grant money, anything, that we're putting it towards cleaning up these ditches and getting these canals together. Because, good God, what I saw is terrible. And I mean, I would be frustrated as a citizen if, if I had to look at that, you know what I'm saying? It's terrible. And...
Oliver Harris, you know, that's one thing I've been talking about, sitting here on this board, is flooding and water. this board is flooding and water and stormwater. And just from a normal rain, we have flooding issues. And I thank you for your concern and Oliver Kinsey for this concern. But George, if you can, please, with the conversations that you've had, you've had with Avery and yourself and me, explain about the pumps, please.
The pumps turn, especially up until the rain event that we had yesterday. Those pumps, there's additional electric pump that runs daily. The diesel pumps draw down a huge volume of water. What you've seen in a lot of the canals recently, we've had no rainfall. We've transitioned into sap seeds and trees have started growing, so the vegetation's taken up a lot of water. So you've seen the elevation of the water and the ditches go down. We've had no, no rain. The invert of the bottom of these ditches is below the groundwater. It is also below the normal level of the river. Lots of these canals are connected directly to Jack Smith Creek. Jack Smith Creek's directly connected to Neuse River. So a lot of times the water you see in those canals is at the same elevation as the Neuse River. It is a combination of that, and if Neuse River wasn't there, it would have groundwater in it. We're not going to be able to dry a canal out because of how deep the invert of these ditches are right now.
So the one over by the train tracks, is that where it was?
Yeah. The North Hills. The one that transitions across the hills.
So why is all of that water in there like that? Why, I mean, it's literally, I mean, not moving. An alligator could be living in it. I mean, that's how deep the ditch is or the canal is and how high the water is. How?
Those ditches have just been dug, they've been overdug and the invert of it is lower than what will be allowed to process.
When you say allowed, are you talking about state, state like mannequins?
No, no, no. I'm talking elevation, elevations dictate.
Well...
And I'm not sure you would want us to draw those canals down to dry.
I don't think you would either, but I'd like to see something better than what you got.
I think that would be worse than leaving water in them. And you'll see the, you'll see the flow of the ditches return and the canals return as we had precipitation yesterday. We just had an extended period of drought.
So those pumps were wrong yesterday?
Yes, sir. The electric pumps were wrong.
And those are five, six thousand gallon pumps?
That pump is larger than that. The diesel pumps are twenty a piece.
I know, but I'm talking about the electric.
It is significantly smaller.
Than five?
It runs more consistently than the diesel pumps. Diesel pumps will stage come on when we have, when we have rain.
If you had a budgeted amount of, I'm just throwing this out there, guys, 2.5 million, what do you think you could do with that? Do you think we need more, like a better pumping system? I'm just throwing it out there.
It would be difficult for me to give you a number or tell you I had a specific area of what you wanted me to address. You know, 2.5 million, you know, that, that could go to infrastructure to redo pipes throughout the city, but that may not be your goal, what you want to do. So it would have to be a specific type idea that you can, that I can maybe reevaluate.
I'd like to see in New Bern, North Carolina, rather than anywhere else in North Carolina or the southeast, I'd like to see a European piece of equipment that they've been doing that for thousands of years. There's equipment out there. I'd like, if it's a half million dollars, a million dollars, I'd like to see the right piece of equipment that could properly maintain some of what you saw the other day and you saw a couple of months ago, that instead of ten or 20 personnel, employees having to go out there, that this one piece of equipment, you know, did what 10 employees did. Not, I'm trying to put employees out of work. But, you know, we are overwhelmed with what the element have seen the last couple of months. I think right off the bat, every year, Oliver and Oliver, you get a call from Green Fire, don't you? What is that call? Come out and mow the banks of that large canal. Your dad designed it. And it was designed, like everything in New Bern ought to be designed, it's designed where a tractor can go on the side and with a side mower it can mow it. He gets the calls because of them saplings. I got it for eight years. The canal we went and saw, there's no reason you couldn't get in there and do the same thing. So the first thing you do, you identify areas that we can traverse with traditional tractors and things like that. The other part, you look in some of the European equipment that they have, and nobody on East Coast has.
Mr. Mayor, I want to just point out that under this FEMA contract, some of these remote ditches that we have, I actually was visiting one last week, they are actually in the contract building roads alongside of these ditches through the woods and stuff.
Praise the Lord.
Pardon me?
Praise the Lord.
Okay. So, you know, our, we can get our equipment in there once FEMA pulls, or the contractor pulls out. I mean, they, I was over...
Elk major.
Yeah, yeah. So although things are going to get easier where there's a road that can gain access to the ditch, there's no doubt, and probably any of us is mind, when this project's finished, we're estimating it may be three years, that, well, that's a lot of ditches to clean out, you know, that, that we might have to hire some additional staff to work on them. You know, one of the things that we're going to do that, I don't even think George, I don't know if George is aware of this or not, but we want to put marker poles in these ditches and take photographs of them. So if we have another hurricane in Florence, we can come back and show them, this is what the level of this ditch was before the storm, now this is the level after the storm, and it'll make our life a whole lot easier when we're applying for FEMA to start removing sediment from these ditches. Just because FEMA's doing it this time, they can do it next time, too.
Oh, so to the FEMA stuff, is there anything that we can do as a board to push it faster than three years?
Oh, I don't think you, well, I mean, it might go a little faster in three years because it's going pretty fast, it seems like now. But each one, you know, you're talking about contractors and having to go out on bids for them and cleaning them out and, you know, monitors on site and everything else, too. You know, it may go a little faster than three years, but, you know...
I'm just concerned because...
We can't, we can't get with so many contractors to do this work.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying, before coming up on hurricane season, you know, you keep on top, on top, and eventually like with a roof, eventually the roof is going to cave in and are we at a point as a board, as a city, to sustain any of that that is going to happen? We saw Florence and we, you know, rebuilt and did that. But hypothetically, we, we have to think, we don't want it, but can we survive anything like that again, you know? And that's what I'm concerned about. Like, I just feel like there's something that we could be doing, you know?
You know, as George stated, a lot of these ditches are low enough that you're seeing actually groundwater in them, you know? And New Bern's been here for a long time and we've had a lot of hurricanes and we're going to have more of them, you know? And when you're at our elevation and when the river decides it wants to come up, it's going to come up. So I don't care what you do with ditches, it's going to help. But if you have a bad enough storm to push in 10 foot of water, you know, it's going to flood.
So, so that's what I'm saying. And again, I want to move on, is what, what can we do creatively and innovatively with this water? You understand what I'm saying? Like, it sounds crazy, but if you're able to engineer or, you know, get with the school or schools, students to create and engineer something that we can have on a plot of land that we own that takes all of this extra water and does something with it, like if we could bottle water, I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's crazy, but it's a possibility.
They've been doing it in Israel for 50 years.
That's right.
That's how they get their water. I know that we could talk on, on...
That's right.
I would, I would like, as soon as we get the budget approved, to early have a budget workshop, I mean, a workshop about drainage. But I will say, in the spirit of the original engineering within NC State to, to do the Simmons Street extension to pumps and the pumps over by Evergreen, that the Neuse River and the wind tide or whatever, you know, when, when that was closed off, that's relevant and it's not. And what I saw the other day, a couple of days prior to a rain event, the amount of water standing in the, in the main canal behind Evers Avenue, to me, is an unacceptable amount of water in that canal that I by no means want to see all the water pumped out of these canals. I don't want to totally destroy the, the ability of vegetation to thrive in those areas for erosion control. But there was a significant amount of water, and I'm not going to belabor it any further, that I don't think's acceptable for the fact that that system was designed that once it was put in place, you were going to have to cut off the Neuse River or you were going to be pumping the Neuse River. So we'll talk about that later in a workshop, but do you have something?
So that's, that's the area right there. George, is that the area you're speaking on, the pit, the photo I sent you right by the tracks where Neuse is cut off?
That was where the East Rose Station is discharged, yes. That's right, close by to where the lift stations pick up for the weapons.
So are those, I guess you would call them pipes, culverts or whatever, are they sealed off enough to where water was not going to be coming through those pipes? It didn't look like it.
At one time there was a gate valve there.
They were open about inch and a half, two inches the other day.
And, and, and we've had some discussion and looking at some ways to regulate the tide coming in, but we're still limited to elevation. You know, hurricane type event, we're not going to be able to stop the river with gates. And that elevation has come and there's nothing we can do to stop it mechanically in those ditches, so.
So, I mean, even by replacing the seals on those big pipes to...
We can certainly look at that. And in certain areas, and this may not be the case of Evers, we've had a great influx of beavers, which could contribute. If you're seeing water right now in places that it should be down because of the season, it could be a beaver issue.
George, those markers that Oliver and Aster mentioned, could they be placed in, like Duffy Field Canal, in some strategic locations so when anybody rides by, they can look and see what the level is, measurement on that ditch, and then look and see what the level is in the Neuse River and say, okay, well...
Certainly, certainly.
Are you talking about the markers that, a type of marker that's right there in the canal by Hazel Avenue? Is that the type of marker you're talking about?
Correct, but I'm not, I'm not sure what time those were put in, you know?
We put those in, I want to say that was post-Irene or one of those hurricanes. We put those in as a gauge to be able to determine what the levels were at specific locations. There's another one right there where the Jack Smith Creek Bridge is on Oaks Road. You can look over to the right-hand side and there's one that has black and white graduations on it. That determines what the elevation is and, and they surveyed that to the point to where you should be able to determine, hey, look at the Neuse River, it's at elevation one and a half today, okay? Well, that means one and a half, anywhere within the system upstream is going to be one and a half inches or one and a half feet in the, in the ditch lines. So again, case in point, you go to, well, one of the places you talked about resurfacing the other day, which is down there in North Hills Drive, the end of North Hills Drive, that end of the cul-de-sac, we've mentioned it many, many times, is like two, two and a half. So that means if that ditch back there behind that along the railroad tracks, the one that's right there close to where y'all were referring to off of Simmons Street, it's probably going to have a foot and a half of water in, which means it's going to be within a foot of coming into that, that end of that cul-de-sac. Any kind of small rain event or regular sized rain event is probably going to cause water to back up into that catch basin and eventually be on the end of, of North Hills Drive. That's just...
But then again, in a dry period, Oliver and Best and I were over there, that culvert was three quarters full of water, right? And there hadn't been a rain in weeks. And either your culvert sat wrong or you need to be pumping some water.
And this is at the East Rose Station?
Yeah, and if it's right there at Simmons Street, I think this is where y'all are referring to, I guess. I'm just not familiar with what the actual river elevation was that day and nor the elevation of the pipes. But we have that, most of that data, I believe.
Yeah. We can certainly check that. That's not an issue that our normal maintenance crews can take into it.
Well, let me ask you this, do you know, and I kind of know, and it's kind of like a lawyer, you don't ask a question unless he knows the answer, but I think I know the answer. The original idea of the Simmons Street pump system, everybody thought it was going to just, the Floreces and everything else was going to be a thing of the past. That's not what happened because of the railroad tracks. So what is that mark, seven, seven feet?
It's more, no more than that.
So having said that, in my thought, the environmental end of this was to get all the contaminants in that basin area, underground oil tanks, et cetera, out of the Neuse River. And part of that was pumping it into the man-made wetlands area through a phasing of primary, secondary indigenous plant life, et cetera, evaporation to keep that underground oil contaminant and all those other things from the internal, that basin, out of that Neuse River. That was more of what I think the spirit of it was. Along the same lines, it was an opportunity for, for staff and elected officials to monitor and decide somewhat the drainage of that basin. When I say the basin, Washington Street, Lincoln Street, Garden Street, the whole area down there, all of that. So I'm going to just zero this in for a landing that the average citizen in that area will tell you that, that the overall drainage is no better with those pumps than it was before the pumps were ever put in. Because at least during the tidal down, inverted down of the Neuse River, at least you had a couple of days where your canal was kind of out of water, you know? You don't get that now because it's blocked off by those O-rings she's talking about that are, are open and, I don't know. We need a workshop on it. We actually need physically all of us go out there and look at it, part of that workshop, and then the board help the staff decide what they want to do. Yes, sir.
Now, you said it, I was going to ask you to say, but you remember when the engineer from the state came down and they put the pumps in? You and I walked around from the pumps, went to Hazel Avenue. There was a big stick out there and we showed the guy that the water hasn't moved that out. And he said, you can't do it. Something is wrong. I said, that's why we're trying to show you to get you to better inform us what's going on. I mean, it didn't even move the water at all. And I mean, the water was coming through, but nothing happened on Hazel Avenue, the water remained right there.
A good example of what the pumps can do, now you're right in that the wetlands were created for water treatment more than water retention or storage. When we had the November rain, the eight and a half inches rain, 17 hours, we had both diesel pumps running at almost full capacity. We pumped over 50 million gallons of water out of Duffy Field in 24 hours. And if you remember, the water was in people's yards, it was up to the streets. That next morning when they woke up, it was back down into the ditches. That's what those pumps can do. And they can do that when the river elevation is at a level that it'll go out. But that, that's, that's really the benefit is if those type of rain events, we can get the water out and we get it out quick. But you're right in the fact that those wetlands were created to treat the water more so than to treat heavy flow coming into that basin.
George, I got a question. On page 125, it shows on the budget highlights, it's a million dollar street resurfacing project. And maybe I'm just misreading, but on 140, I'm only seeing 400,000. Could you explain the difference in those two?
The highlights page wasn't updated, 400,000's the number.
Okay.
One million was the highlights page that was submitted by staff whenever the original budget was submitted, but, you know, obviously with 10 and a half million dollars of expenses over revenues we have to cut, and that's one places we cut, so 400,000's the number.
Okay, thank you.
George, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On your capital expenses, the $250 sidewalk improvement project, $250,000 sidewalk improvement project, is that for new sidewalks and is there a different line item for repair and maintenance of sidewalks?
Well, what is included in that sidewalk is approximately $100,000 to finish the sidewalk project along Country Park to the Trent Woods, city, to city limit line with Trent Woods. And then that also gives us another 150 to do fill-in places where we may have certain blocks that don't meet to the next block and do some infill work. And it also gives us money to go back and fix things where we have damaged sidewalk. So it'll kind of be a balance between about, you know, 100, 100 for that new section and 150 for infill and repairs.
Well, I personally would just like to see us do repairs to the sidewalks that we currently have instead of making, you know, adding additional sidewalks. We've been adding sidewalks for several years now, but we got sidewalks that are desperately in need of replacement.
in need of replacement and repair. So instead of building new sidewalks, I'd much rather see some of this, much of this money go to repairing the sidewalks that we currently have.
I agree with you there, I agree with you, Alderman Astor, because I'm just going to use Blaze Avenue as a prime example. Oh, it was years of neglect over there, and the city has gone in kingdom and really looks good. I put, you know, I think that's what we need to, you're right, we need to clean up what we already have, and we clean up and repair what we already have before we start actually building more.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, you know, continuing to make the connection that we've already started.
Of course.
But as far as adding additional sidewalks, when we got sidewalks in some of the districts that are falling apart, I mean, I'd love to see this money used this year at least for, and concentrate on repairing our busted, broken sidewalks and getting rid of some trip hazards.
Man, I hate, I hate, I hear what you're saying, but there's communities that for years have not had sidewalks and have been begging for sidewalks, and I think we need to.
Well, it might be a good bond issue.
Yeah, Primbrook is still wanting to go down that road of getting some sidewalks, you know, because they walk on the street, and they're, you know, they want a certain standard of living as well. So I do think funds still need to be allocated, and we still need to take a deep dive in how we can, you know, accommodate our citizens over in Primbrook, because they are tax-paying citizens, and they would like sidewalks. Also, over in, over by where Bear Town is and South Gate, they want sidewalks. I talked to Matt before his departure, and he said it was probably about 250,000 to do the sidewalks in that area, and, you know, they're, you know, getting a petition together. So people do want sidewalks. I know it's frustrating on both ends, but, you know, they want sidewalks. I think we need to, you know, look at that and see what the people are saying, you know, because people want sidewalks, so that's the only thing I can say to that.
And I'm going to bring this up, but I know we were supposed to discuss it in that meeting with, about the bonds and, you know, and stuff, but I'd like, how many miles of paving can we get for $400,000?
That's difficult, difficult.
A mile?
Well, depending on the weather conditions, some roads with the resurfacing, we can do, if we're just resurfacing inch and a half overlay, you know, typical city block, we can do for about $40,000. When you get into full milling, when you get into full-depth patching for damaged roads, the price goes up. So, you know, we've been trying to balance our road rating with our selection of roads as we do every year, to try to hit the ones that are, have the lowest rating, that have the most traffic, and that's how our selection process is being.
Well, again, I hope that we, when we discuss this possible bond issue, that we can put money in there for some additional paving. This may sound bad because the subdivision is so new, but the road, some of the roads in Tawburn are absolutely falling apart, and George can tell you. Yeah, and with $400,000, Matt told me, and that's the only thing that the people over there complain to me about, is the condition of the roads. It was so bad, at one, we had such a dip in one of the roads that a guy tore the front end of his car, the shrouds under his car off, when he drug bottom coming across the road. And this is a new subdivision. Yeah, well, it's what now, 25 years old or so, but fairly new subdivision. But it's a shame, and those, our roads in Tawburn, I believe it or not, are in good shape compared to some of the other roads. But we desperately need to put some money in this budget for some, for some paving.
But if we can get it through the other way, I mean...
I don't care where it comes from, I agree, you know? But we need to have that meeting so we can get going with that.
Mark, I have a question. So I saw in, under your message, that we have 400,000 for street resurfacing, but it's not under the capital.
I couldn't find it either.
So is it just missing?
It's not in capital.
If you look at page 19 and 20, where Public Works is under street, the 400,000 is not listed.
It's not a capital item.
It's not a cap...
So I couldn't even find it in the regular budget.
R&amp;M Street Resurfacing, it's under operating budget.
Okay, but not in as cap, but you consider sidewalks capital?
I think the sidewalk capital was specific towards a retreat topic item that y'all discussed.
Well, it's a sidewalk improvement project.
It's additional items, it's not operation and maintenance. Maintenance, resurfacing is considered to be, I mean, that's like
Okay, just...
$420,000 in street lighting. I mean, you wouldn't put that as a capital item, that's to light the streets, it's $420,000 operational cost. And we can make that, obviously, you know, the board's decision, but I will say, you know, the city has been pretty aggressive with its resurfacing over, I mean, it's 10 and a half million dollars. We did a four and a half million dollar bond not too long ago, you just built, old airport road was two and a half million dollars, we just, so we've done some pretty aggressive roadway construction projects recently. 400,000 is just, you know, that's, and quite frankly, 400,000 should not be, under any circumstances, spent on entirely just one and a half inch overlays. You really, in order to, and when we go back, and I know I'm preaching to the choir here, I think, with regards to the pavement management rating schedule, the whole reason in having the rating was to determine where are we at as an average. I think our average now is what, 80 something?
Yes.
Which is really good.
It is.
Which is really good overall as a city, considering how many miles we have. So when you take that into account, 400,000 needs to be spent based on what the most applicable usage is at that time, based on the life of the asphalt, and not let it get to the point to where you have a full-depth, complete, full-depth repair. Otherwise, you're going to be in those conditions even worse, as Alderman Astor mentioned. So you really need to be taking care of these streets through maintenance activities such as crack pouring, crack sealing, doing some skin patches. I know it's not a pretty black asphalt, like everybody wants, it's nice and smooth, but to extend the life of the asset and to maximize the taxpayer dollar, that's what you've got to do. Otherwise, you might as well just float a bond every year for $10 million and go out there and resurface the entire city, because that's what you're going to wind up having to do, and you still probably won't catch up. Because 187 miles, I don't know what the price per mile is these days, but you can multiply that out, your average lifespan on a, of your streets, you can divide that in, and bam, you got your number about how much you should be spending every single year on resurfacing. And I guarantee you, it's a bigger number than you want it to be.
And further down, just to follow what you said about maintenance, included in this budget, there is a paving issue, which is going to allow us to address larger patches resulting in smoother roads when we do these repairs, which will extend the life of a lot of roads, it's not going to extend the life of some roads that are in such disrepair that require full milling or full-depth patching, but it's going to provide for a better road. Now granted, it is not going to be one black color of asphalt, because you will see the patch, but the ride quality will improve greatly. And we're hoping that as we utilize this piece of equipment, that we'll be able to take care of a lot of these items that long-term will not cost as much to resurface.
I have one other question in regards to the money for City Hall, for the City Hall, the elevator expansion. So of course, it's here under capital. We'll be going out to borrow that money, correct?
It would be anticipated. I can't imagine you would have probably spent general fund dollars on that.
Right, so that, but it would still be under this as a capital, capital review and that, and that's how you'd have to budget it. Because we may, and I, you know you're aware of this, I've been made aware of it, of some of the real deficiencies, we're finding one that is extremely dangerous, and somebody's going to get hurt, to the point we've had to move IT out of the third floor, but the stairs are coming out of the wall going up to the third floor. So I guess back in the day, they put like a wooden dowel into the concrete, and it has rotted, and the stairs are starting to come away. So we're, in renovating and doing what we're doing up there, we're starting to find some of these deficiencies. So I believe that we're going to have to look at additional funds. Matt thought before he left, the funds to fix that, and they don't even have a quote yet. Plus, the blinds for City Hall, we're not including any of that. And some other things that they're finding is wrong is about half a million dollars. So I don't know, while it wouldn't be a budgeted item, when we go out to borrow the money, would we then have additional discussion of that, about adding those additional funds or how to do that?
You could certainly do that. The question will be is, do you want to go ahead? I mean, you've already established the City Hall Elevator, City Hall Project Fund, that's there, I'm pretty sure it's been established, you're setting a budget now, $3 million, it's going to be done, and the question is, do you roll all that together? Or do you keep it separate and just do the elevator project as new construction? Either way, it required, you know, the approval at the LGC, it's done, so it's really up to the board at this point. And I don't know if it will require an amendment from the LGC to have it approved, because you're changing it to a larger amount, but the intent to reimburse based on going out for debt service has already, you know, that's definitely the intent.
And the other thing that we're going to have to look at, that I think we should look at, and I would hope you, as a board, would support it, is that we've got to have security cameras in that building. There are no cameras inside or out. And I don't know about you all, but I am really uncomfortable when we have our meetings at City Hall, and we are upstairs, and that door is open downstairs. And anybody at any time could come in there, and sometimes, I don't think there's a policeman at all times downstairs, sometimes upstairs. Now, I'm thankful for Alderman Astor and Alderman Odom, but with that being said, that anybody could come up there, and that concerns me. It concerns me that we have people working on the third floor. What if somebody came in there during the day and did something? There's, I just would like to see security cameras in that building. We don't even have, are there smoke detectors in that?
There's a fire alarm, yes, I guess, smoke detection, but there's no suppression.
So, you know, I'm just concerned. I mean, it's our, you know, our iconic building, whatever, and these are the things we're in there fixing now, we're going to be adding on, we need to be looking at as well. So I just think we need to be in tune with that going forward.
So when we have our five years, when we have the meeting for the five-year capital improvement plan, that we can discuss all of that?
Exactly.
Was that the meeting? Was that the one that was...
We have to schedule, yeah. I got a question, Mark or George. On page 20, under the capital expense request, you got streets at, it says actually sidewalk improvement project, $250,000.
That's the Primbrook, isn't it?
No, that's the overall. But then, also, you go back over on your page 143, you have under one of your line items, sidewalk and curb improvements, $250,000. Am I reading that right or wrong? Mark?
I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
Sorry.
That's in your capital outlay, sidewalk and curb improvements, $250,000. Same thing. I mean, what?
The first page is a highlight of the different categories.
It's, the first page you referenced is showing what all the capital expense requests that were approved in the budget, that's included in all these pages.
Okay, so it's not in there twice?
No.
Okay, thank you. Darren? I don't have any more questions for George, other than you're doing a good job, George. Thank you.
Thank you.
You and your staff.
Yes, yes. Excellent job. Thank you. And I promise not to bug you so much. It's all right.
All right, are there no questions for George? Okay. All right, we'll move on to, I guess we'll go back to the start, we'll start with the general fund, with the general government. Honestly, there wasn't a ton of, I'm just going to go through them real quickly. Page 46, the governing board, there's no significant changes there, as you've seen, pretty much the same. The first administration, same thing. When you get to legal, you'll see an addition of 25 percent, or I'm sorry, $25,000, that was the increase for the Assistant City Attorney, that was outlined in the details, the budget details on page 54, so that explains that, as Scott came to you before about that. Elections, we budgeted $40,000 for elections, we know it's going to be more, but if you have a runoff, you don't even know whether you're going to have it this year. So we tried to budget for something.
Because you wouldn't budget, because, you know, the outline based on what Melanie Ray said, the first one, would be about 46.
Well, it generally...
46, 809, and then if you add on the runoff, it was going to be 73, 78.
Yeah, so if the board wants to budget $80,000 for, or $75,000, and so be it, but...
So you'll just appropriate it as needed.
Yeah, and generally, we would appropriate it just to cover, I mean, we, in the end, at the end of the year, we only operate normally at what, about 94 percent or something like that of our total expenditure, so you're going to have the money at the end of the year to cover it regardless. It's just going to require that cleanup budget amendment that we do every single year to cover that. So generally speaking, we typically budget for an election, we don't budget for the runoff because we don't know whether there's going to be the need for one, but if you want to do that, we certainly can do that, throw another 25 to it or 30 to it.
Mark, question on, from the number eight. Just curious, the proposed budget for proceeds from debt is considerably higher than the previous years. I'm assuming that is Old Airport Road?
Proceeds from debt issuance, take $3 million away from that, which is City Hall, it's actually going down $400,000.
Okay.
Generally speaking, proceeds from debt insurance, or I'm sorry, debt issuance is the funds you receive from the bank whenever you're borrowing money. So we will have an expense that will be, let's call it $3 million for the City Hall elevator, we will take out a loan for $300,000, it's counted as revenue. The next year, once that project is completed, then it goes to a debt service line item that's probably going to be under general administration, I don't know wherever Mary plans on putting it. That will go under for a debt service payment year over year over year until it's paid off.
Interest earnings looks very low, $3,000 versus the prior year of 320.
Interest rates are terribly, terribly low right now, and so we don't anticipate making a ton of money, not to mention with the interest rates being lower, we also have a lower cash management fund amount that's in there because of the expenses we had due to Hurricane Florence. So coupled with all of that, there's a reason why we're not anticipating that as a huge revenue increase this year.
My last general administration question, and I ask this probably every year, and it just still boggles my mind, how we have $22,000 in postage that does not include utility bills. I know that there's notices we have to do when we sell things, but, and I know everything's not one stamp, but if you look at it as one stamp, that's 40,000 pieces of mail.
A lot of certified mail, which is more expensive. Obviously, we have to send those out as a requirement for notices and things like that, to make sure that it's been served properly. I don't know what else, Brandon, you handle a pretty substantial amount of postage.
So if that's a development services task, shouldn't that be in the development services budget versus the general administration? I know it's still money, it's still general fund, but...
Well, you put it in development services, we generally put it in the general administration because it captures a lot of all the different postings we have to send out, which gets shared amongst all the different funds. Development services, if you put it all in there, it's obviously, you know, the majority, we could separate it out if you wanted to, based on who uses it and clean it up in the end, but, I mean, in the end, you're estimating what it would be, and then...
Just always seems like a lot, but it's necessary.
I see such a big increase in the miscellaneous revenues. What are we doing that we're going to add additional 200, 215, that?
Is that permitting fees, miscellaneous revenues, I'm just, real quickly?
Sam, sorry, we're real close to start.
Page eight, miscellaneous revenues is going up $200,000.
Going up 99%.
Maybe y'all can give some quick detail. Let me, let me see if I can find it here.
Is there any discipline that many, you think, building permits and things like that? We haven't added any building inspectors.
Actually, we did last year, I believe, and we are adding a nuisance abatement officer and G.I. person to that service.
Right, I saw that.
Part of it's actually called, you know, it's kind of in the office, so that's like a hundred, this is a, so...
Okay, so that's a...
That's a big chunk of, by, a little team, that's all, so, that's a big chunk of, that's a big chunk of...
And that, and forgive me, it may not be the permits or in the revenues. It may be in intergovernmental revenue. I can't remember exactly. There's so many revenues. We've got three pages full of revenues.
I have a quick question for you, Julie. I have the tax collection day. So I know we're paying crazy taxes to collect our taxes now. So it jumped. What's the percent increase we get every year? And is that based on a contract for every so many years? Yeah, I mean, at some point, I would think it would max out. So I don't, I know when we made the deal with them, I think it was $500,000 at the time, the first time we did that. Do you remember when we first figured it out? Yeah, when we first sent it to the town.
No, it was $130,000. I think it was $132,000.
Okay, so I know, a hundred something, but then it was 155. Now it's, oh, excuse me. It's 155 now, but I believe last year...
Do you have last year's book all of the numbers?
I think it was 146 last, yeah, 146.5 was last year. I got it. 146.5. So I'm just curious how they...
It's going up in the same percentage that our tax people, they collect. It's not a black rate.
Me, I have a question. I'm no accountant, but I do know that when interest rates are low, and I know they're really, really low now, but at what point do interest rates, well, I guess what point of the money that we borrowed, our interest rates is at? And it lowers. At what point do we, like, think about refinancing our debt for, or to obtain that interest?
So that's part of what we have, what the tax report, Ted told me, that's part of each role, and that's part of our, of course, the budget. There's a kind of a change, there's both advantages to doing that, and one is the community agreement. There's also a few that we actually, when we, the town, we borrow the money, we compare it to the look. We may, and I have an eye complimenting the finance director prior to the vote. We got some 2% kind of loans already off, so it wouldn't pay. And then a couple of bigger ones are going to roll off, and then she was hoping they might be, they might not be worth it. But we actually look at that and consider it. And we do know finance is not that big of a part of that package. And I'll be sure we have you break that down in time.
Fine, thanks.
Any other questions? Continuing on as we do each year, special appropriations. Just, that's, you know, do have the mayor in the picture there putting stuff in Christmas tree.
Mark, remind me, did we ever adopt a policy for special appropriations? We did. And I thought it was in there that in an election year, only half of the amount would be expended, correct?
Yeah. Is that, yeah, but I mean, obviously, are we having an election this year or not? I don't, but yes. Generally speaking, that was something that was agreed upon by this board, is that in election year, the discretionary funds available to each alderman would only be expended 50% so that it afforded the other aldermen coming in, which would be at half of the year, the remaining 50% to spend, whatever. But that's dependent upon, you know, once again, when we're going to have elections, you know, that we may have that full of money. PEG budget. We do have a couple, I know that Colleen had put some additional things in there for PEG. Most of it's a little bit IT restricted, miscellaneous, other services. I don't know. Colleen, you specific real quick just about what those additions were? There wasn't a whole lot with PEG. It's usually pretty, pretty consistent across the board.
The one thing we hope to do in this coming fiscal year is a Zoom meeting enhancement project. As you know from doing those meetings, the audio and video could have been, could be troublesome at times, especially with the delay. We want to enhance our audio and video capabilities, feed those directly into the PEG room to eliminate some of that. That's what my ask is for this year. It will include the purchase of a robust PC with a much better graphics card. It'll be in the PEG room. It'll be so much easier to control PowerPoint presentations and other photos and things that people like to show you, even if we are in the Zoom environment. We'll be able to show them in that way. So.
We're going to be cleaning up all the wires in the courtroom, so you're not going to see all those wires with the renovation across. So they've done a really good job in...
And that's this fiscal year is the project Alderman-Bengal speaks of.
I'll bring something up that probably won't be very popular, but I don't know when to bring it up. But now's probably a better time than any. The good thing about PEG channel versus social media is there's no commentary that can be added by Peanut Gallery, if you will. You know, I think it's very disheartening. I have no issue with people, they want to bash us and bash decisions we make and whatever. There's forums for that. The problem that I have on social media is we're providing a venue for anybody and everybody to say whatever they want, whether it's truthful or not. And, you know, one example that sticks out in my mind is when Matt was here and we thought there was going to be some frozen precipitation. And you put a post out to keep the public informed that we're going to spray the streets. And you've got a lot of negative comments about, why are you wasting money? It's going to rain first. So as that saying, no good deed goes unpunished. I do know that there's no legal requirement for us to allow folks to post comments on our social media page. And even if you think about petitioned citizens, we require them to give their name and address for the record. There is no requirement for that on social media. So I know, Colleen, you've looked at some of that stuff, and it's something that we probably need to take a look at. Again, people can say whatever they want to say on their own page, but for us to provide, and what's really disheartening is when you look at our City of New Bern Facebook page, and a lot of people that's looking to move here, they will go visit that page. And there was, there's some conversations, a few years old, there's conversations about just all kind of crazy stuff that really has no bearing on anything, and it's very detrimental to people that's looking to come to the city. And I just don't know why we would provide a venue for somebody to do that.
Are there other governmental entities?
Yes, the county doesn't.
The county doesn't? So they have a Facebook page where it's just information only, but you can't comment?
Right.
I'm just curious about that.
I've got a quick question for you, Colleen.
But we're not taking away Facebook, correct? We're not to go live, you're saying, remove comments so they can't comment.
Yeah, I mean, because at any point in time, anybody could just get up there and say something, whether it's true or not. And we're trying to, it should be, in my opinion, it should be used as a venue to get information to the public. It shouldn't be a, that anybody can start a page if they want to and say, I hate City of New Bern, and they can go back and forth and say whatever they want. But on our official government page, I just don't think it's a good thing to allow that commentary back and forth.
Yeah, as long as we're able to, doesn't it have to be a public record, though? So I'm saying if we...
If we allow it, then yes, we're supposed to maintain it in perpetuity.
Yeah, so.
And we are archiving all of our social media. Yes, ma'am.
I understand that, because true, like you said, petitioned citizens, not come to the meeting, call in or get on Zoom to do it. But I, as long, for me, the whole process for three years ago was just making it easier for people. If I'm in cookout line, let me see what's going on, but not commenting. So as long as we can still keep that. Would that be just something that we would have to have debate and comment? I guess we have to get the city attorney involved in that and just make a decision as a board? I wouldn't mind moving forward on that, just to keep it, keep it straight.
I wouldn't mind moving forward with it also, but I still have a question for you.
Sure.
Facebook, and I'm not a real big Facebook person. But there's somehow or another, I keep, I get a message every now and then that there's someone has sent me a message on the New Bern Board of Aldermen Facebook page. Is that an official page of the City of New Bern?
No, sir.
Well, then it needs to be removed.
Yeah, who started it? We, we put up that, oh, is it a delete? Yeah, but I, I thought it was deleted. I don't know how to delete it. We put one up there thinking that was what we could, you know, have conversation about, but it, I think Scott had said that was not in our best interest.
Would you look into seeing how long we can remove it?
Four years ago, yes. I don't know.
Yeah, you can petition Facebook to remove it, and they look at several things, what its traffic has been like, you know, several years. And it takes a while, but it can be done.
Well, whoever set it up, can't, don't they have the passwords where they can delete it?
Yes, they should, if we know who the author...
Is it under, do you know? I have no clue.
I don't know. Somebody look into that, please.
Sure.
I have no clue.
I'm glad, I'm glad to work on that.
Thank you, Colleen. You do a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Can, can we take a five-minute break in between people? We've been at this thing for over two and a half hours now.
Oh, yeah, make a motion.
Make a motion, we take a five-minute break, sir?
I'll prepare the motion, say aye. I'll proceed.
All right, so next on the item is IT.
Mark, we had, some of the board members were discussing, and we would like to let Amanda go next, if you don't mind. It's not a problem?
It's not a problem.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Amanda.
I want her to get home and put her seat up.
Not that we're doing anything, just as you were...
Amanda's here for development services, so I'm going to turn it over to development services. She's filling in for Jeff tonight.
Yes, so, good evening, board, mayor. Thank you. So you all are familiar with development services. I know we're just doing kind of a quick overview tonight of the budget and what is new. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Some of the key highlights include two additional positions, full-time positions for the department, some AV upgrades for the development services conference room to support the meetings that occur there, and then the replacement of two vehicles. So there are two divisions within development services. Of course, the planning division to support land use and economic development, community development, transportation planning, GIS, as well as the New Bern Area Metropolitan Planning Organization for transportation-related improvements throughout the region. The planning division supports nine committees and boards. So there's two committees under the New Bern Area NPO. And then the other boards and committees include the Historic Preservation Committee, or Commission, the Board of Adjustment, the Planning and Zoning Board, Redevelopment Commission, Community Development Advisory Committee, as well as the Department Review Committee. So we host a lot of boards and committees throughout the year. And then, of course, we have the Buildings and Inspections Division, which administer all building codes for residential and commercial development throughout the city. So that's a little, just a little bit of high level as far as what our department does throughout the year. We requested three positions, and there are two that have landed in your budget. One for a nuisance abatement project, which will primarily be focused in the redevelopment boundary area to support the activities of the commission. And then a GIS position to support the work that Alice Rupson, our GIS manager, does. And I think Mark did a really great job summarizing that at the Board of Aldermen meeting, the other meeting. In addition, you'll see that there was, I think, a slight increase to professional services. The majority of that will go for the KAMA update. That's something that's required under state statute and that we need to do. It'll be great timing for that as it'll come on the heels of our resilience plan, our resilience and hazard mitigation plan, which is making recommendations for many of the things that you guys have been speaking about this evening. So that'll be good timing and something that does need to be updated as it's been a number of years since that has been completed.
Question for you, you mentioned resilience. So are we nearing completion of that study, the plan that they hired to do the proof? Or are we getting close to doing it on that?
Yes, we are getting very close to the end of that. We started it just a little over a year ago. Initially had some delays as we kind of executed the contract. The shutdowns started related to the coronavirus pandemic, so we kind of shifted focus. But we do have a draft of that plan that is scheduled to be completed this summer. And then ultimately will come before you all for adoption. So once that draft is complete, we'll have additional public meetings to get more community and stakeholder feedback. And then we'll devise what that final draft looks like for ultimate adoption by the board.
So do you estimate, or do you think within this next fiscal year that you will start implementing any of that plan? And are there funds? That's why I couldn't find any funds that would potentially be used to implement, or is that just something you're going to have to come back and ask for?
Well, in upcoming, we did receive some grant funds, which will help us with implementation of pieces of that plan. We did receive some funds from the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency to hire a resilience consultant to help build some of the staff capacity to implement some of those policies or projects that are coming out of that plan. So you will have a recommendation come before you for hiring a firm to help us with some of those activities to start implementation steps. We also received a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant to further prioritize some of the restoration projects specifically related to improving habitats and, you know, green type of projects related to the natural environment. So we are currently applying for North Carolina Land and Water Fund grants, which would help bring a potential restoration project to 100% design. It would kind of co-mingle and provide a match for that nitwit funding. So right now, we really have been going after grant sources to help with the initial implementation steps. But the plan itself, there will be some really robust, long-term, large-scale infrastructure projects that will be recommended. And then there will be some smaller policy changes or land use changes, ordinances to be rewritten. And we will hope to use that resilience consultant, which will kind of be multidisciplinary services, you know, to help aid our staff.
So I guess the answer to the question is that you anticipate some staffing needs, but right now you're planning that to be covered by grant funding and not through budgets?
Correct. There is nothing within the budget to support the implementation of the resilience plan. So I'm sorry, I should have said that first.
So the areas, with this money coming in, what areas would you be working all over?
Yes, so the resilience plan is for all of the City of New Bern. We did have focus areas within some of our more distressed and vulnerable communities. So, you know, areas within the Greater Five Points District and Redevelopment Boundary Area. And then we also had focus on our historic districts as well to provide kind of innovative solutions to help provide solutions for historic buildings and those assets as well.
Okay, what about the Greater Duffy Field? Would you be in that area as well?
Yes, yeah, so Greater Duffy Field, Greater Five Points, the Redevelopment Boundary Area, yes. And we have, of course, the Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancement Project that is active and continuing on. And, you know, that's one example of a type of resilience project that we would look at potentially replicating within other areas of Duffy Field or throughout the rest of the New Bern community.
Amanda, how many nuisance abatement officers do we currently have?
One currently.
One. And is that, is that nuisance abatement officer currently handling the territory that's inside the Redevelopment Commission as well as the rest of the city?
Right.
So are we expecting so much work that we need another one just to do the Redevelopment Commission's area? I mean, if he's already doing it and been doing it for probably 100 years?
Think that work, I'll answer that. Number one, they do, that person does have a lot of work. Number two, if you recall, the board approved the ability of this nuisance abatement officer to perform interior inspections in these homes. I think that's some of the intent of what this would be because in the redevelopment area, you're dealing with homes that are virtually inhabitable as far as, you know, we would feel. Holes in the floors, not fit for standard of living. A lot of the renter-occupied homes, which aren't being mained... A lot of the, 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 uh, renter-occupied homes, which aren't being maintained to the level that they should. So, a lot of this kind of falls in line with what this person's gonna be doing, uh, as well as, uh, the cleaning up of the lots and, and handling those nuisance abatement-related issues. But, I mean, it's, it's, it's definitely, it's a full-time job for the current nuisance abatement officer, just from the standpoint of the paperwork. Not to mention, I mean, you've got to go through, you gotta have these paperwork, everything's gotta be documented, you gotta go through the processes, you've gotta notify them, you've gotta have meetings with the people to tell them how that they're going to, uh, go about abating these issues, you gotta give them time, you gotta follow up on all those. So, when you start wanting to make a difference and an impact in this area, in this Redevelopment Commission area, then you're gonna have to have somebody that's policing it on a regular basis.
Right.
Okay.
The redevelopment plan is very robust, and, but, um, the expectation is to roll out the, the pieces and policies of that plan. And in addition, as far as training, this individual would be trained to also become a building inspector as well. So, having those skills, um, which will support the rest of the department, too.
So it is like a building inspector, so you're gonna get two for one?
Correct, yeah.
Amanda or, or Mark, um, we did a reclassification on Felicia with the MPO.
Yes.
Did that get captured?
Yes, um, so as far as the MPO goes, they have two full-time positions, the administrator and then now a planner. Um, so she has already become, um, a planner position, uh, so that has happened this year, and so that is reflected in this current year budget. Um, and I'd be, uh, happy if you want me to go through some of the highlights of the New Bern Area MPO. I can certainly go into that in a little more detail, if there are projects or activities you want me to kind of pull out.
I don't think so, I think probably in a future meeting sometime it would be beneficial to get Kim and or Felicia to come and kind of update the board. The problem with MPO is, everybody thinks that that's a board that you have a direct line to DOT, and we go get a pothole filled. It's really a forty, fifty-year-type planning. But I think it would be good, I was talking to the mayor, um, a couple days ago about, um, MLK and the plans to turn that into a super street. He didn't even know anything about it, so I think it would be beneficial to kind of get update on some of those level projects.
Yeah, absolutely, I know, um, Kim provided me with some great information for tonight. Um, you know, I know one thing that has been a topic of conversation at several of your last meetings. In this budget, there is an update to the City of New Bern Bike and Pedestrian Plan. Um, so I know that's something that you all have been discussing, so that is a, a highlight from this year's budget, as well as several small area studies of, of different corridors throughout the city of New Bern. Um, as well as, um, the other kind of service areas of the MPO.
The only project I wanna see MPO do is to fix the transportation issues. It's the only thing I would be careful about, where it's, we'd like to have some form of transportation, either upgrade carts or do away with carts and put a, a transportation system, because we can't get people to work. It's just not gonna have work, hospital, whatever, and that's been an issue for many, many years.
As you currently know, carts are public transportation's accounting function.
I understand.
And until there is some conversation or some changes that take place, that's when it could be.
But can't MPO do anything?
Um, does anyone have any other questions about the MPO in particular?
I have one other question, I just, um, because it is confusing and the way the budget's written, it's confusing. But the money for the Redevelopment Commission, we've given them a pot of money, the 455,000. Should they not have a budget that would go, and should they not, I saw where you recommended 20,000. I know already what they're gonna spend in, you know, moving the house and, um, uh, you know, other properties that they've purchased. I could see 150,000 being spent already, and that's not budgeted in here, and that will be in this next fiscal year. Should that not be some kind of budgeting in there? Should they not produce a budget for the Redevelopment Commission?
I mean, they, they, they certainly could put together a, a budget if, if that's a request of the Redevelopment Commission and the Board of Alderman. But, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not, um, I'm not familiar with what their work, particular work plan has identified as, we need to budget for this. But maybe you, you're, you're more, more familiar with it.
Well, I mean, we've never discussed that in any of the meetings or anything like that, but they have this pot of money that, right now, when it's gone, it's gone. They, they don't have an income source yet, working towards that.
That's, that's probably what they're trying to identify, and then at that point, they will probably have expenditures related to making that income happen, which is probably going to be, uh, improving certain homes, making them to where they're, they're gonna be renter-occupied as transition homes, and then eventually generating some revenue to start coupling that, so that.
Well, they've already, you know, they've sold a lot, so that's, I don't know if the closing will be before this fiscal year, but those would be funds that would be going into there. So again, I, I just, I think it's a good idea, it's still taxpayer dollars that we're administering. The other thing is moving forward is at some point, it's gonna need staff. It really is going to need a director, it's going to need staff, and, you know, again, for budgeting purposes, they need to look at that. So I would just like to see a little bit more, either detail or whatever, so that they have the funds they need to do what they need to do.
Do you think that, that would be, um, a little bogged down in our actual budget? But if there's a line item, but they do, whenever we need to ask them to produce, um, a statement of what they're doing, that we can?
I, I think, I think what I would recommend.
They're a whole other entity, unless I'm confused.
Yeah, but MSC is a, a whole separate entity. They have funds that they, they come in, they have a budget, they put the, we have a page here, we can look and see what they're spending their money on, you know.
But does it have to be included in our budget? Could it be something that say, hey, Amanda, can I get the most recent budget that's like a running thing?
I'm just asking a question.
If, if, if the board wants a full, long budget, then what I would do is, uh, I would, if I were y'all, I would recommend to the Redevelop, to, to, to Jeff, to get with the Redevelopment Commission and let them work together to draft a first budget.
Yeah.
Present it to the board, because otherwise, I, I think, Matt, I, I think they've got plans. It's just, to, to, to this point right now, until they get a revenue stream, why would they put a salaries line item in there? Because 455,000 dollars is gonna go away real quick if you put a salaries line item in there, unless you're gonna hire a position in the general fund.
Um, not, not arguing that case, but then, you start spending money and all of a sudden, you know, it's just good to know what you've budgeted this year, you know. It could be they can find enough property that they'll spend 400,000 in this next year. If, if that's the case, that will further along their mission and their vision.
So great, great, it could be, but, I mean, again, you're budgeting for something that could be, or, or may, or may not happen, so.
That's what I'm saying, if we.
Understood, I'm just asking a question.
Is it for us, and then to say, okay, you know, I mean, are we gonna take money away if they don't have a, a balanced budget, if they, if the projects are?
It's the same thing with MSC, we don't take money away. They put a budget together, they, they pay for uniforms, they pay for, you know, the carry downtown, they pay for, you know, parking enforcement. They just have different things that they pay for, there's a revenue and, and income, I mean, uh, revenue and expenses.
Right.
So I was, I was just asking that question.
Yeah, specific to the Development Services budget, there's a $20,000 request, which would be from general fund to implement, um, you know.
I was curious.
I, I think eventually, what you're going, I think eventually what you're gonna see is you're gonna see this budget line item grow, okay? And it's gonna grow based on the mission of what the Redevelopment Commission is trying to accomplish. Right now, the only thing that's on there is other professional services and land and structures. And right now, they're, they're not budgeting to spend any of the 455,000 dollars, but it doesn't mean they can't make an amendment and spend part of that 450,000 dollars. The revenue side of things, they're showing that, you know, they're planning to, to, um.
So again, that, my question is, so, but what do they spend the 20,000 on? What, they have spent funds this year because they have done, I know they have done things in trying to get the plan out, and I'm sure there were expenses relative to that. I'm just curious, so the money would have been spent down in some way, but what's the 20,000 for?
Amanda, you probably know that detail.
So that, the 20,000 dollars would be things for administrative support to implement the different pieces of the redevelopment plan. So the regular day-to-day activities that are, are required. And there was, uh, you know, a lot of discussion between the director and, and staff, you know, regarding, thinking long and hard about a potential executive director position. But as far as productivity and the needs of the department, um, three positions were recommended, two of which are funded. Um, the other one was for supporting, um, economic and community development for an administrative assistant. That was seen as a, a higher priority for this year, knowing that moving into future years, you know, there will be more activities as far as growth, leveraging the 450,000 dollars, um, to attain other grant or loan sources, um, to, uh, accomplish larger scale, you know, developments now that property is being acquired, et cetera. So I do foresee, you know, in future years, uh, you know, there's certainly, as, as rental properties do come online, there will be revenues and things like that to account for. And I'm sure that Jeff and the Redevelopment Commission would be more than happy to provide, uh, a budget to you. It just probably was seen as premature at this point in time, but we're happy to do whatever you all request.
I, I know I'm getting old and my memory's not as good as it used to be, but do I not remember a board meeting? Mary's sitting on the front row, we were discussing Redevelopment Commission, we were talking about money, and she made a comment that she had some concerns about another board, another governing board managing funds that we're ultimately responsible for. And her and Scott had some back, do I remember that? Do you still have those concerns?
I think we do, I just need to look for it, but, um.
Okay.
Can you elaborate for me, uh, on what, what, on the actual redevelopment or the budgeting process?
The, the finances is what she has some concerns about.
Meaning, we need to keep it separate from the board and allow them?
I think that's what she was saying, but Scott was saying that it still falls under the city somehow. But, you know, my thought is, we, we allocated whatever the 400 some thousand dollars for, um, it's, it's in their budget as a line item. Uh, but to me, I would like to see that sort of pulled out somehow and keep that separate. I think from an auditing standpoint, from an oversight standpoint, because the Redevelopment Commission, when it was first brought up, you know, we talked about all this flexibility and all these unique things that they could do that we can't do as a city. We give them all the property, and then we find out now that they can't sell anything until it comes back to the board. So now I'm questioning, why do we give them all the properties? You gotta come to us to begin with. So I just think it would be cleaner if we were to manage that somehow differently, that's my opinion.
Um, since we're on Redevelopment Services, um, one thing that I have been discussing, um, amongst different cities, I'm not sure if you're familiar, um, with the, um, governor's tax, task force in regards to, um, diversity equity inclusion officer. I remember I spoke to you, I remember I spoke to you three years ago. More than ever, I think it's very important, I've talked to Jeff about it, for us to kind of look at that, whether it could be funded this year or, or not. Um, I'm gonna keep hitting it until we get it. But, um, I think if we, that extra position that's needed when it comes to economic development, you have to sometimes, um, look at it at, at a racial equity lens, and that's what this development officer would do. Because you may not have situations like the redevelopment and where it is right now, if we were always proactively looking at how development comes in our city. When I first came here, and I don't know if we have continued, but there's certain things that we should be keeping records on, and like, that's, um, hubs. Historically, black businesses, making sure that we're providing those contracts or they're getting those, we don't have that information. And there's a lot of cities that do, and so that's something that's part of developments, Development Services. I asked JR about it, um, I'm not sure if he continued the little amount of information that he was providing, but I do believe that Development Services does need a diversity equity inclusion officer. It's not anything new, I know you're paying attention to the, um, school system, um, they brought it up at their board meeting. Um, it, it, it's something that is, is very important, and we need to be looking at things from an, from an equity lens for all citizens. And I feel like if we have this position, um, and I can submit, you know, what the position is and things, but I really would like for you guys to look at this information and think about possibly funding it, because it's a, it's, it's, it's gonna be a benefit to our city if we're, if we're looking at everything holistically and you're looking at, at it from an equity lens. So, um, I just, I really hope that you guys can look at this information, and, and, you know, we, we definitely do. Yeah, I'll, I'll send it, um, we definitely do need, um, to me, I feel like we do need some more help in Development Services. I mean, redevelopment in, in itself, that's a lot, the Redevelopment Commission. So I am for any position that needs to be funded in the, in the Development Services to be able to get help with this work, you know what I'm saying? So I just wanted to put that out there, and I'll follow up in an email with, with the position I'm talking about.
All right, any other questions for Amanda on any of her budgetary items?
Sorry?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that we pull HR up first, her budget's very small and doesn't appear to have a whole lot of information in it that's changed from last year, other than I have got one simple question, and Mark, you might even be able to answer that.
I've got one.
Under HR, uh, other professional services, $38,500, is that the, um, survey that we're gonna be doing, salary survey?
That's our salary survey study, yes.
I have no other questions, really. So, I'll, I'll ask a question to make your trip worthwhile. We were doing this salary study, and we were gonna do it every so many years, like Mark mentioned earlier. But I thought that the reason we started doing COLAs is so we wouldn't get out of line. Is it still the standard to do these every five years, is that?
It is, it is, I mean, you're gonna have some municipalities that do incorporate COLAs into their budget and others that don't. So it is a good idea to do it every, at least every five years, you know. Hopefully it wouldn't have such a budget, a negative budgetary impact if we don't shift our salary schedule with COLAs. We're just hoping, like Mark said earlier, that it won't be quite as bad in the budget.
So, so what do they do? I mean, what, we've never seen this, and maybe we're not supposed to, but I'm just curious what this survey looks like.
Okay, so basically what happens is we, um, provide them with our pay plan, we provide them with all of our job descriptions, our classification descriptions, and they benchmark them against, um, cities that we decide on upfront, who we wanna look at, you know. They try to get information from the COOP, or, um, I mean, that's their own utilities, they try to get information, but it's fairly difficult. So sometimes try, try to back our way in and get what we can. They compile all that information, they look at where our employees are, they look at whether or not there's any compression issues that we need to address. So, from beginning to end, they take a look at where the ranges are, where our people are, and what we need to do to bring it forward to make it right.
And if you recall, and, and maybe y'all, y'all, maybe not, maybe you didn't get into that detail, but I wanna say it was our compression-related issues at our last survey, about $600,000 or something like that. I mean, it's pretty significant that we had to overcome, um, because of, of years of not evaluating the studies and then also, um, adjusting positions without adjusting everything accordingly. So we had a lot of, a lot of issues we had to overcome with that.
And one thing I will add, too, is we don't just take the data that they provide and say, okay, we're good with that, I mean, use it. And we go back and say, how'd you come up with this? Or we don't think that needs to be there, we think that we need to, so we don't just turn it over and say, give us what you have. So we talk about it, and they may say, okay, well, that does make sense, we look back at that and, um, and maybe find that a little bit different than what we originally thought. Sometimes they'll get data that was used to study, so they may have to throw that out. So we are really, really on their backs about, you know, we take it very seriously. We don't just take what they say and put it in the reference, and you all.
Do, do, do they compare counties as well as municipalities, or is it just municipalities?
Um, some municipalities, we do add a couple counties in there as well, yeah, but mostly cities. And, you know, they reach out to COOP, but that's all good.
Who do you want next?
I said to you now, man.
Um, well, let's see, uh, y'all wanna go ahead and do Mary and, I guess, well, uh, Finance with Accounting and Purchasing Warehouse? Yeah, I mean, they've got to stay at the end, I guess we, I mean, we can, we can go ahead and knock them out. Foster's our host, so I figured we'd let him go last.
He's got the lock up.
He's got the lock up anyways, yeah.
I have very little, um, nothing exciting. I have three, three tabs in this book, um, starting with the Finance Department itself. The only, the only real change I have is we added a position this year, it was the FEMA and the Grants Position, she's been hired. So the total, our total budget for next year will increase 5%, basically just, that's the only position, that's kind of the only thing I really added. Uh, we've decreased some of our professional services and some other areas, as we continue to try to find ways to, um, you know, sort of become more efficient in what we're doing, utilizing technology. The one fixed charge that did get increased was the, the, the amount of money that we're handing to county for our tax collection. The, um, yeah, that's really it, there's nothing else exciting going on in the Finance Department, if you have any questions, please jump in. In the Tax Department, we're actually down overall. In the tax department, we're actually down overall. That's the folks downstairs with customer and payment services. I know that doesn't roll off your tongues quite yet, but the newly divided, newly developed, created department that we had once utility billing moved out. And this was the, this current year that went is the first full year since we sort of separated and divided those two. And I'll be honest with you, when we were trying to produce this budget this year, we were just trying to take a guess of the office supplies. And that was all one department. We kind of gave them some and gave us some. So we've actually got a little bit of information now to justify the numbers we have in the current budget. And their, their budget's going to go down as well. The one area that they are increasing, of course, is going to be with some of the payments that we are, that we are spending our, I think it's miscellaneous, miscellaneous professional services. We're paying for, for the credit card companies and for the lock boxes and some of those electronic initiatives that we are, that we are, that we've begun in that department to kind of just make things more efficient. Those are costs, a little bit of money. But overall, the budget is, is increased overall. So I don't feel too bad about that one. And the only other one is the warehouse, purchasing warehouse. And she's, she's asking for a new truck this year for her guys. They don't, they just, they do need a vehicle to get stuff around, delivering stuff to the city and trying to get large items moved from point A to point B. And then she's also got some money in there for some of the cameras. We didn't get to IT yet. We kind of stopped before we got there. But we do have this, the police and myself and I don't know Foster, they had some too. But IT is going to pay out of their budget the software for some new security cameras around the city. Including in that will be some security cameras at the warehouse. So she's got, but each department is going to buy the actual camera itself. So we do have some money in the warehouse department. So that's really the only big changes. I've got one vehicle and the one position we added this year and a little bit of, you know, miscellaneous professional services for some processing fees.
Mary, Kim being a FEMA and grants employee, most of her salary being recorded as DAC?
Currently it is. It says she's done nothing but FEMA since she got here. But this is only week three. So she's really focused 100% on FEMA since the day she got here. I will tell you, we have 50 active grants currently. And I think I just heard Amanda say she's applying for more. And those grants typically require at least a quarterly report or a semi-annual report. I've done a few of those in the last couple of weeks, just trying to get the first quarter reports out. I know Kim Ostrom's worked on that. We kind of share in the work right now until, until Kim Rose, our FEMA person gets up to speed and gets caught up with some of the FEMA tests. Then she'll kind of be splitting more. But she's well aware that she needs to be tracking her time on what she's spending on FEMA. And she's actually got, she's started to keep track of some information for the rest of the staff. She's going to try to make it easier in the future for folks to record exactly the time that they're spending. And so that she'll, so it'll be easy for her to get to it and get uploaded with more time than mail.
Have we requested any CATZ yet? And have we received any?
We were just with Sam today. I think we're waiting on Sam is working on a little bit of that. And this, and then we've got access, we just got access to going back and looking at some of JR's calendars and Lori Mulligan's calendars. That's what we're doing right now. So I know that HR, I mean, IT has, is working with Kim to run a program to give us some additional dates.
Okay.
That, that position is, we determined was just almost critical.
I agree.
We, we have so many grants that are out there. And that's the reason why we did a mid-year. I mean, those are very uncommon. We, we will do them if necessary, as long as we have a position request that allows us to do that, or a position classification that allows us to do it. If we don't, we bring that before the board. We actually had one here because it was an accountant type position. So we put it in there. But, but I can tell you, between the 50 grants that she talks about, I've been here for 10 years and there's been six hurricanes that we've had to deal with that I counted. Two of them major Irene and Florence. And then you had Dorian, Michael, Isaias, and Florence.
Matthew?
Matthew. So, so we've had, in addition to Irene and Florence, so six in 10 years that I've been here. And almost each one of those at least required an activation of the EOC, which required some kind of accounting and everything else that's necessary. So as you said earlier, they're going to keep on coming. And this is a position that's solely dedicated to FEMA and grant work.
Well, I have to say, I've been in several meetings, Zoom meetings, with Mary and the two Kims. And they, they're all doing a great job with the FEMA work. They, Kim really, both Kims are on top of it. And I'm, I'm really excited about having that person there to do that work.
So are we.
Mary, how often is there a physical inventory taken at the warehouse?
Currently, they take an inventory. They're actually doing it a couple of times a year because they're in the process of upgrading the bar code system, which they're doing with their current budget money. So they're not asking for money for that. In the warehouse, there's a huge one that's done in June where every single thing is counted. But she's, she's working on perpetual inventory system. And I, and I do, I do know that she's got a new fellow, Thomas, who started this year. Elaine, Elaine left and we hired Thomas. And he had a lot of experience and he's actually been implemented. So I think she's getting counts monthly, but they're doing one section at a time monthly. And then they do a final one at the end. And she's actually starting, going to work on doing a whole physical inventory for the entire city. She's got, we've got that going on. We're going to need to start doing each department. We're going to come in and start counting stuff.
That's asset inventory. That's everything from, anything that has a significant value. Furniture, microphones, everything.
So the inventory that's in the warehouse is that? If you experience any shrink, does that go back to each individual department? Like if it's a spool of wire, does that go to the electric department? Or does that get captured in the warehouse budget?
It would go back to the department, but she doesn't, they don't have, they have very little to none. I'm impressed by, by what goes on. But it's, I mean, it's, it's fully staffed. So it's not much in there. They're, they're tracking it. They haven't, they haven't experienced any in the last, I think she will say four years at least. There's not much in it.
We used to have an inventory full of just widgets. I mean ridiculous stuff. And, and we, we really, I mean, paper, boxes of paper clips, notepads. We had, what was that? Phone call logs with, with triple, triple duplicate, you know.
I remember some of the, some of the cases and cases and cases of letterhead that was a mayor three times ago.
So, so we did away with all of that. That's responsibilities of departments. We changed all that and, and fixed all that. Now they handle things that are of significant importance and it travels through. They manage all of the inventory as far as the ordering, pretty much for the electric department. But it transitions real quick because of the inventory and way it gets used and stuff. Probably 95% of the warehouse utilization is from the, from the electric department.
Or more.
Or more, yeah. 98 maybe.
We've discussed, we've discussed having them helped fund it, as a matter of fact. So that's maybe next year's budget. You guys will hear some proposals about how that needs to be funded. If it's a really general fund function or not, I'm curious.
Any other questions for Mary? All right. I'll tell you what, do y'all want to drop back and just knock out IT and the other general government real quick? What's, IT budget, obviously, they, they have, you can, you can read their line items. They, they have a significant amount of increased support tickets that they have to do each year. Tony put a graph in there from 19 to 21, what the increase has been in fiscal year total tickets of work that they do. The amount of wireless network access points. Y'all right now are working with wireless access points. They're monitoring and managing all of that. All the desktops and laptops and tablets and iPads and everything else. As technology increases with this organization, so is the need for IT resources. They have requested and was approved in the budget for one additional position. As you know, this is one of those, IT is one of those budgets that gets split out between all the different departments based on usage. But we have 509 registered email users within the city. So a significant amount of, of data goes across that. I think they're up to, what was it, 25? Was it 25, 22, almost 23 terabytes of data, which is a very, very large amount of data that comes through. So they have to manage all of that and make suggestions. Several capital items that were approved. I know one of them was the voiceover IP addition for the phone system. And then they've got some backup appliances and security servers. They do have that, the, the data management and the, the software for the camera system that we're looking to do utilize citywide. They're going to be kind of the clearinghouse, I guess, for the software programs. Some of those PD will be monitoring from their locations just from security purposes. But a lot of the different departments are being tasked with putting in their own costs as far as the security cameras. But they're managing the overall, I guess, programming and server and maintenance and responsibilities such as that, so.
Mark, that, that phone system was in last year's budget as well. Did it just not happen because of COVID?
Mary, do you remember what happened with the phone system last year that was in the budget that it didn't get, it didn't get spent for what I can't remember?
I, I think that we were putting that in by means. And then we have, there was a couple of different options. And then something that we never got through really. We didn't ever get it formed down to what we actually needed. And we also need something that's going to be compatible with TMS. Something that can actually push a button right there and fill. And I think that's a good thought because it's the same thing.
So, so just to be clear, we didn't do a phone system last year for half of the city and we're doing another half this year, 450,000?
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, I got a question. Even with the additional employee that they've asked for, do they still need $20,000 for temporary help services? And what would that person be?
What they do, the temporary help line item is generally utilized for some services that they get from the state. If it's beyond, I guess, the, the scope of work. I'm, I'm pretty sure now, I can verify that for sure. But they oftentimes, we will approve some, some work from the state contract that allows us to bring in some help for a specific thing that we might need that we don't have the expertise internally on. So that's what that temporary help would be. It may be towards the implementation of some of these, you know, support systems as far as our, our servers and everything else. It could be for, normally it's not for computer type installs, but more technical related kind. Interfund transfers, those are pretty, pretty mundane. If you want to talk about those, we can. I'm sure that.
They look a heck of a lot better than they looked.
What's that?
They look a heck of a lot better than they looked 10 or 15 years ago, Mayor. Do you agree?
Yeah, sure do.
I was, I was reading through them and it's just amazing how things have sorted themselves out.
Yeah. Contingency, we didn't really put anything into contingency this year. So if needed, you know, obviously, we, we might, could take whatever the savings is from these employee type things, since we budgeted 2.1 to have a little bit of contingency. But we don't have anything in contingency this year. Like I said, we had a 10 and a half million dollar cut we had to make. So that was tough enough alone in and of itself. Municipal Service District 247 in your budget book. As you know, the Municipal Service District has their own taxable authority. They taxed the downtown district. And that's the reason why they have the sidewalk improvements and different things along their streets. Not a lot of change in that. They fund several different things towards the parking fees and the staffing for that, as well as they look at acquisition of property. I think, as you recall, there's some property that we're looking to acquire now that, that will probably come out of the Municipal Service District. But once we get word about that, then, then obviously we'll, we'll need to adjust for that at that point. But it'll probably be bought with, I'm going to guess, it's probably going to be bought with, with cash in that particular manner because they've got it right now. Anyways, that's, would be forthcoming, something that y'all would need to finalize in a session here, hopefully in the future. Any other questions with Guardian MSD? All right. And then I want to say that any of the other grant funds we have, they're all back here in the back. There's just lots of little miscellaneous grants we have to capture somewhere. If there's any questions about that, Mary or myself, be happy to answer any of those. But there's just lots of them. Okay. All right. We'll move on to the next. Let's see, we have, that would be police. So we got three left. We got police, fire, and park and rec. So his inaugural visit to the, to the hot seat, well, we asked our chief Gallagher to come up.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I first want to thank Chief Summers and staff for putting the budget together. I inherited it. I think it is a well-designed budget. And I appreciate Mark and his staff for promoting much of this. I also want to thank Kim for providing me with some, some contact this morning. One of the areas that I wish to promote in this budget is body worn camera expenditure. It is a high ticket item. It is not a one and done process. It is extremely expensive. And this is not germane to New Bern, but it is germane to the profession. The needs for body worn cameras are something that the community is demanding. And I can tell you from a profession, the police staff are also very attuned with the needs to have the body worn cameras. So I am more than happy to answer questions pertaining to that. I am also thankful that the city manager and his staff has approved 400-plus K for automobiles. Our fleet is in need of replenishing. And I was told at one time that it was critical mass until it became necessary to ensure that our officers are driving vehicles that we can maintain. And the last part I'd like to highlight is the importance of adding one additional FTE, which is sergeant position, so that we can build out what we would consider our team five, which would be a proactive police squad. What we currently have right now are teams one through four, which are essentially reactive patrol teams. The ability to assign specific, the specific team for proactive purposes for direct patrol is critically important. And I'm happy to answer any questions pertaining to the budget you were before.
I'm not sure if this is a budget question or not, Chief. But with this team five that you're doing, are you going to have an officer permanently assigned to the battleground zone? It's always been an issue when, I talked before about it, that the reason why there's never an officer in that area is because there's no crime over there. And that's, I just, I'm sorry. I just don't, that's just not a very good excuse for me. I think that, you know, an officer needs to be in the area for security purposes and everything else too, and being able to respond, especially when this road construction starts. So is that zone five?
No, so team five would not be specific to that. But I am aware of your concern with the fact of the presence in that area. We will address that. And I agree, the presence of a police officer in specific, in all areas of New Bern is critically important. There is a certain reality that we deploy staff where demand is high.
I understand that.
But that does change the fact that omnipresence of law enforcement in all communities is important. And I am working with my captains to ensure that we have, we deploy our resources in all areas where we should never be that busy, where residents, as you described to me on a, on a side conversation, really they don't seek police officer. And that should not be the case.
Thank you.
Chief, a question about your body cams. I know that from what I read, that some, some, some use involves the sense of tasers, pull or gun, it automatically initiates. Is that what will happen with your cameras?
I do not believe we have purchased that particular item. That is a high-end Bluetooth item. What the mayor's talking about is not only taser, but also the handgun has a Bluetooth activation so that when, when an officer does pull their firearm, it will not only activate that officer's body worn camera, but any other officer that is in the proximity would automatically activate that as well. That is a critical piece of equipment that we can look to add later. And the value of that, and I've seen that in my. And the value of that, and I've seen that in my previous agency, um, where the muscle memory of activating that body worn camera does not necessarily, uh, is not necessarily the first thing an officer thinks of when they encounter a deadly force situation. Their training is such that they are going into defensive mode, not necessarily, I have to activate the camera. So that certainly adds, um, one additional layer, uh, especially in the environment which we have now, that if we do have an officer involved shooting or another act of, um, use of force, um, that that camera is activated and we do have footage.
Well, to that, to me, the, uh, you're going to get sixty cameras, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
To me, you know, if they're not activated when they need to be activated, might as well not even have them. So I don't know anything about what the cost would be for that item, but I, I, I know that when, when you need it, you need it. And, you know, do you have any idea what the price would be?
I do not, but I will look into that. But I will tell you that our policy will be that our officers will activate their camera the moment they go en route to a call for service. So I'll grant you, you may have three, five minutes of just seeing the, the steering wheel and, and, uh, from that vantage point, but it is important that it is activated. One of the things that I've been asked before is why doesn't the officer just keep their camera on all the time? Well, that's just not realistic. Um, the amount of data that would be required to hold that amount of, of storage would be just astronomical. There is a certain learning curve with, with the officers when they first begin to use the body worn camera. Not only will we have policy language governing, um, its use, we will also have training before we deploy them, um, and we will have oversight. So my hope is that we can transition, um, our program, uh, quickly and so that we wouldn't have a situation in which we do not capture video.
How do they activate the camera?
It, it's just a button, right?
So he has to physically mash the button to activate it? So if he's, if he's just walking down the sidewalk and gets ambushed, I mean, he's going to not have time to activate his camera.
That's correct.
But if he draws his weapon or draws his taser, it will automatically-
I was thinking, look at that.
I think I agree. I mean, I'm here for officer's safety and I don't, you know, I think we ought to look into that other option.
Will it do both things? So it'll just record, but if you do get your gun, so it's the full gam- it'll provide protection if they go for call for service. If they, and they put it on, it'll record it, but if they forget to put it on and they get to the site and something happens, it automatically kicks in, correct?
Yes.
So they have the option of either way, manually putting it on.
Part of the added cost of that would be likely the purchase of all new holsters. And now the price starts to, um, grow exponentially. However, I will get a cost for that.
Maybe if nothing else, we can phase some of them in or something.
Well, Chief, so how many officers, is this a body worn camera is going to be worn by all officers, even those inside the building or just those on the streets?
Currently, um, we will deploy the sixty cameras to our uniform patrol officer. So detectives and command staff at this moment would not be, we just don't have enough at this point. But that's not to say we couldn't phase those in, um, in future years.
Chief, we've, we've talked about this for many, many years. I believe there was two issues that always came to light. Number one was the storage of the data and the cost of that, um, was always kind of the first, um, roadblock that I think we ran into. The second one was the actual policy. So I'm assuming that you're working with staff, attorneys, or whoever as far as drafting that policy?
Yes.
Make sure we're in on it.
Yes.
And then the, um, the last piece that I'll add is, you know, I would just ask that we do a lot of due diligence when we make these purchases. It's going to be a significant investment. And over the years, um, through previous administrations before I was even part of this board, there were purchases made that may not have always been, turned out to be the best decisions. And I know that there's certainly pressure to get these things acquired and get them in, in use, but, you know, I would rather us, you know, wait if we have to to make sure we make the right decision. And yet that could be having conversations with neighboring municipalities and counties to see if there's some sort of bulk order that's done or whatever the, you know, application process is to get those quotes, but, um, that, that would be, you know, my advice.
We have done that. And Axon Taser, which is the brand that we are looking at right now, um, is top of the line, industry-best, uh, product. It is expensive, but it is tested. Axon Taser is also the same manufacturer that develops or manufactures our taser and also our ink car camera system. I would not advocate, um, having, um, Axon Taser as an ink car camera vendor and having a secondary, um, other vendor. I think it needs to be all in-house. And you're absolutely right. The, uh, the data storage is a critical component and it's not just the police department that has, um, a vested interest in this. Prosecutor also has a vested interest because once we obtain footage that is related to a criminal event, then prosecuting attorney is also going to want to have access to that. So they will also have a license. Um, and there are, uh, retention schedules that we are looking at, um, how long will we keep this video? If it's evidence, right, well, then we have a, a retention schedule for that. One of the things that I'm asking for is that we maintain, um, the video for at least thirty days so that if a citizen wishes to file a complaint, that we can maintain these, um, these videos for at least thirty days, even if it is a germane or a, a, a call for service that didn't result in really anything other than a report. So if the citizen has a complaint, they have thirty days to file it and we can pull that. And the parole affairs can lock it down and we can maintain that for, um, our parole affairs complaint. Is that sufficient?
Um, I agree with both, um, Alderman, Odom, and Mayor Outlaw, um, that we should definitely take our time on this. And the other, time in really doing the research. I'm a full advocate of body cams, um, especially in this day and age. But the other part is, is like what Mayor said, we don't have any at all. So, I mean, it makes sense that if we're going to purchase or get into, to this, um, added equipment, that we do have the best so that it's an automatic recording so that there's no discrepancy between the situation and the officer and everyone is protected because it's something that is automatic. And unfortunately, we see our sister city, Elizabeth City, is doing, dealing with some things in lieu of a lot that's going on in this country. For us to be proactive and we're going to spend this money, it makes sense to have something where you pull it, automatically it's recording. And then, like you said, I love the idea of, you know, keeping it for so many days so that that does can alleviate some of the storage issue that I know, um, we have talked about in the past. I know Tucson has, um, you know, that's been a, a topic of discussion because then that's the responsibility of the, of the citizen in that complaint, that if you had a complaint, you need to follow through, you have thirty days, and then if it's, nothing pans out, then we get rid of it. But you have to look at both, both sides of it. And for me, again, I think that if, if this is something that we're going to move forward to in, in the New Bern Police Department, I definitely want the, 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 the top of the line for our, for the protection of our officers and for the protection of our citizens because we're here to, you know, you're here to serve and protect not only yourself, but also them. So I really do believe that this is something that really needs to be discussed or, you know, present, you know, what that ticketed item is, what the amount is, um, 'cause, you know, I'll stand on ten toes and, and make a motion for whatever added money we would need as long as it's going to protect our officers and protect our citizens in these type of situations. But God forbid, we, we never have anything like that, but if something was to arise, we're all protected. So I, I do agree that it should be something that is automatically done and recorded.
Chief, one other thing to that, um, you know, over in Kentston recently, there was an event a couple of weeks ago. And only by the fact that a, a resident had a camera and, and videoed, um, nobody would know about it. And I'm glad it was videoed from what I saw. So having said that, I, what I read a lot of times, what happens is, is there is, uh, video capture of an event, but unfortunately, the part that needed to be captured didn't get captured because it happens so quick that kind of retrospect, oop, I need to turn the camera on. And that's why you need the holster deal to, to activate that thing and get, get all of it. Uh, and I, and I say that to, for, uh, community purposes, uh, I don't, I don't discourage, um, the public from videotaping events. It's as much for our city's protection as it is for the citizens. I just think, uh, there's nothing that's going to tell the truth, and the truth will set you free any better than a video, wherever it comes from.
So one of the reasons Axon Taser is one of the leading manufacturers in the country is they've addressed part of what you were talking about. The camera is actually always recording unless you turn it on. And there are times you would want to turn it off, but during a regular patrol shift, it is constantly recording. So the moment the officer activates the camera, even though it's still on, it actually now captures the thirty seconds before you've hit the button. So what ends up happening is during just regular routine patrol, it's just recording every thirty seconds. It then starts to record over top of itself. Um, so there's always a thirty second button.
Chief, well, we really need to turn you have the simulator because, you know, this all goes hand in hand.
Yes, yes.
You know, you wouldn't have to have these if we had better training and the whole idea, you know, we pushed for the simulator was to give real-time training. So we're actively using that and making sure that our officers are going to do that type thing?
Yes, that's fair. And that's a phenomenal piece of reporting too.
Yeah, they definitely go hand in hand. Yeah, we definitely need both of them. For me, I definitely want the, um, the, the top notch where automatic recording, but I'm always going to throw out there, maybe there is some grants that is out there that we can apply for that may help with this because it, it deals with, um, you know, community policing and especially with everything, again, that's going on in this country. There may be some sort of funding. I'll, um, you know, sit here and look over the weekend, just throw some stuff in there and see because, I mean, we're, you're, if you, if there's grant funding or there's some type of funding that's going to help make a situation better so we don't have those situations, then why not apply? The worst they can say is no. So I know I'm going to do that, but I, I definitely think that we should have something that is automatically recording, the, you know, when you pull it out as a holster, just because that's just what we need.
So Chief, um, I don't know where this information, who put this information together, but it says, like, you know, for the body worn cameras over a five-year, um, over a five-year period, it's like six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. But I don't know if that's for how many officers that will put a camera on or for what type of equipment we're looking at, but that was a figure that was only cheap at six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
I think that's to replace them each year and to add additional cameras. I think you started with, what is it, like two hundred thousand the first year? Hundred and ninety, a hundred and ninety, yeah. And then maybe are you just predicting over the five-year plan to add more? That's the way I read it.
Right, exactly.
So there, there's a license for every, um, for every operator. For every operator, there's a license, and then there's an annual fee every year they're acting. And so when we, we can add additional modules or additional features to the body worn camera, there's redaction videos, there, there's just a, um, litany of things that we could purchase. That just increases the annual cost.
Do most departments that you're aware of, do they have the, um, holster trigger on them that will activate the camera when the-
No.
Those are, do, do not do them?
No, most do not have that. Um, and the reason is it, it is extremely expensive. And most departments understand that in order to utilize the, at least the sidearm portion. The taser portion is a little bit easier because Axon Taser literally makes that, and we can purchase that, uh, in a bundle plan. But with the, with the holster, it depends on the model of gun and the type of holster because the Bluetooth device is connected to the holster. And to my knowledge, um, I believe there's only one manufacturer that is actually producing the holster that fit that Bluetooth device.
Axon A X O N, is that-
A X O N, Axon Taser.
I'm going to say this to you because they, they have a, a body camera grant assisted program, so.
Chief, um, a, a topic of discussion that has been brought up at an augem is nine-one-one consolidation. It's something that certainly comes up every year where every time there's an election, um, it comes up at budget time. We've had various levels of interaction with the county in discussions. When you think you're getting real close and then something happens and there's a breakdown. That's something I think certainly we're not going to delve into that tonight, but it should be on your radar for us to explore in the future. And I say that, did anybody happen to catch the county commissioners meeting last night? So they had their, uh, budget meeting last night and, um, or a budget, they had some budget presentations, I should say. And, um, one of them was for the school system. And, uh, it's going to be in their manager's recommended budget that there's a S R O at every school. I'd like to publicly commend each one of the commissioners for making that decision. I, I don't think it's ever fair to pick and choose which schools have coverage, which ones do not, although to what Alderman Astor said earlier, you kind of send it where the crime is. I'm, I'm sure that's what they did. They looked at the schools that, that had a higher need and that's where they, they supplied their S R Os. But I just want to publicly commend them. It's, it's most likely going to take a tax increase for those citizens of Craven County. But I, I kind of couple that together with what I started this as with the nine-one-one conversation, that it's a partnership and we should be working together. And I'm a strong proponent that the county sheriff's department handle that. They have a hierarchy of leadership that manages that division. They're actually stationed at the central office for the school system. So I know there's some different opinions over the years, but I think that for the citizens and the students, this is absolutely the best decision. And I'm pleased that it allowed us to utilize our funding in a different mechanism to add this fifth unit, which will provide more feet on the street if you're willing to. Thank you.
And also in this, in this atmosphere today of talking about defunding police, you know, I, I think that you should know that this entire board is backed, our public safety department and their employees.
A thousand percent.
And, you know, we, we'll try to give you every tool you need to make your job easier and safer, to make the community safer.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. Two. You're saying that we want to give more information before we embark upon getting the body worn cameras. Is, is that what I'm hearing? But are we not going to go ahead and list the sixty here that you already got buttoned in?
Yeah.
Okay. And just, just phase in as we go along, whatever, different type of- I guess you're going to get the best equipment the first time around so you know what you have to phase in as your goes in, goes on.
Thanks, sir. All right, thank you.
Real quick, wouldn't it be more money to be phasing something in if you're purchasing the body cams now? Or is it something, if you purchase, that there's an additional holster that will work with what you purchase?
Well, what we will purchase will, the equipment that we purchase now, we can add on to that same equipment in the items that I talked about. The Bluetooth activation is nothing more than adding on to that. It isn't as if I have to return all of this equipment to obtain a compatible.
Okay.
So we can, again, we can always add on to those, to that item.
Thank you.
All right. Um, moving to five, I, I mean, there's multiple funds there. If you've got any questions about that- If you've got any questions about that, I'm happy to do it. Those are related to items they receive for 911 funding, Department of Justice funding, whenever they do their drug buys, all kinds of different things. So if you've got any questions about those, I'm sure that we can get into more detail. But this time I'll ask Bobby to come up.
What is he supposed to shut down at nine o'clock before the ultimate death?
We don't have one more.
I know, I'm just being.
It was scheduled for 5:30.
I'm teasing.
Mr. Mayor, Board, first of all, I just want to personally thank everyone for allowing me to be the fire chief of what I feel like is the career of our department. It's nothing that I've done, I promise you that, it's the great staff that are currently working for our department.
And fire management.
I also want to say kudos to Kim. I think this budget highlight format is awesome, especially for our community to be able to read. It gave us an opportunity to kind of give our goals and some things. So I want to say kudos to you for that, for that design. I think that was great. Now, a couple of accomplishments and some things that we're working on, just to kind of bring you up to speed on a couple of things. As you know, we've been working towards accreditation now for five years. And in about two weeks, we will be having our assessment there to evaluate us. And it's been a longer way to think, hopefully, that will turn into July of us becoming accredited to fire department, which there right now, there's 288 in the nation and only 22 in North Carolina. So it's something that we really can hang our hat on and be proud of. We did have a couple setbacks this past year, our community outreach and efforts towards education. Hope we kind of put a hamper, but we're, I met with State Berks Management there providing us some smoke detectors, and hopefully we'll get back into the education program this summer so that we can start back installing smoke detectors and educating people on, but I've always tell everybody, when a new hire comes in, I ask them, what is our number one job? And you've heard me say before, it's fire, it's prevention. If we can prevent something from occurring in the first place, we're, also very proud on our mutual aid collaboration effort that we have done with the county fire departments. That has been a great success. We're currently just implemented our maps. Now we will no longer have to ask for a mutual aid request to come into our department. It will happen automatically. And we've done per districts, and for example, over to Burna, Carolina Color, we have Township 7, Station 31, and Township 6 will automatically respond to those areas due to map wherever it's located. And the same thing on the other parts of the city. We have other fire departments that we respond to as per the map as a response. And the last thing that I would like to talk to a little bit before I go into the budget things is, we currently have five or more, five-plus people that have 30-plus years right now. So they're getting ready to walk that door in now. And we have four more with three or less years and another eight with five. So we have been currently working diligently on developing, we already had a career development plan, but we kind of lack a succession plan with H2N and things like that, preparing and stuff like that. So we're very proud of that, we're working on that very hard. So overall, when you look at my budget, there is, there are some increases, there are some things that went down a little bit, but I'm pretty close operationally to what it was in the past. Now, we'll go over a few things that have increased and kind of explain to you why. Our overtime budget, our overtime budget is very difficult to track and project because we have what we call built-in overtime, where it's not like somebody can go home, or you can meet your threshold and go home. So basically, we have built-in on 28-day cycle. Anything over 212 hours, it becomes overtime. So that's built-in overtime. But also, we have overtime where we do fire education or we do school education, people come in, we've got projects that are people working on, things that above their normal work hours. So that's seen an increase, will be increased by about $7,000 coming here. Our callback, it's never been really used that much in the past. It got hit really hard this year when we had the fire out here at the Niner and Fennel, where we had to call additional people back in to help us with that fire, and we blew that budget out, so I had to increase that one a bit.
Chief, is there a way to measure what a fire costs? I know that the loss of the valuables, but what did that fire at United Stores cost the city?
I can tell you exactly what that cost was.
Can you get us that number? I'd be curious.
$7,000.
$7,000? Because if you had, for example, volunteers showed up there to fight that fire?
Oh, yeah, we had 80, 80-some volunteers show up.
So if they're an employee of the city, they immediately go on our payroll, right? Supposed to?
But there's not, worse than many there, as you thought. We end up having to call the ship because it just, it was like having to fight 32 fires. You had to cut each storage room open, get into that, get to that fire. So that's what made that one so difficult. If that's a normal-sized structural idea, you know, a few hours, that would end up being almost 24 hours.
Wow. We appreciate you and everything that you do because that was, I think that, that was rough.
Thank you. Our medical professional services has increased a little bit. Employee travel training went up a little bit. Some of that is because we're having to play catch-up for COVID, we were not able to see if people had been served type of training, so we're having a little bit of catch-up with these increases a little bit. Our buildings and ground, which is actually under public work, it comes out of our budget, restricted. There are some several things that have occurred that's causing us to replace, like the cabinets out of Burna Road, they're now 20-some years old and need to be replaced, just remember they were in there. Our flooring, different places need to be replaced, but what's biggest ticket was our HVAC, we replaced the outside unit a couple of years ago, but the valves that we got replaced, and now we're having issues with the valves, so we have to change all those. Service and maintenance contract has gone up just a little bit, that's mostly due to changing our software and maintenance that we updated a couple of years ago. Uniform has gone up just a little bit. One of the bigger ticket items that have gone up is our turnout gear. What's happening with that, the carcinogens now? Before, we've always been able to go on a three-to-five-year window replacing our turnout gear, and we've kind of pushed the five-year one as a rotation. So we didn't have to do the whole shift, we kind of rotated it out so every five years we could get a new set of turnout gear. But the carcinogens now that are happening and things like that, they're recommending going on in three years. So we see a decrease of that, just to protect ourselves. We, the masks and any of the hoods that we wear now, we usually could buy it for $25, now to $110.
Nice.
And so it's just because of that carcinogen. But there, cancer, before heart attacks has always been, it still is our leading number one killer of firefighters, but cancer has quickly come up to be number two, and it's happened very quickly. And then, when it gets down to a castle, we currently are receiving some thermal imaging cameras, everybody understands that's asked, so we can determine if we find a person or a fire, find a scene of fire. Replacing our knock box system is a pretty big ticket, and that allows us to enter a building without tearing doors, basically. Basically, the owner of the business puts the outside, puts the key inside. We have secure knock boxes in our trucks that either radio or code to open it, and it's automatically put into a ledger, right, and go back and see that you opened it up on this date, this time, and everything. That allows us to get inside a building to mitigate whatever might issue, because a lot of times it's alarm activation, and we don't know what's happening, and we don't want to tear the door up, it's not going to have alarm activation. Or, again, $2,000 door might be saved if we have just a little small fire in there. So that's to be replaced. Fire marshal vehicle needs to be replaced, and did have a couple other things that, of course, work at a difficult job, and that was, you've heard me say it every time, that's the fire stations, I had those in there again. I'm still standing on that. I think eventually we know as a city that that's got to be taken care of. When and how? I mean, that's, we all have to make that decision, but they are needed. We also, Wildland Fire Unit was in there that had to be cut because of their things. And just to kind of make you understand what is going down, we just recently had a fire off the railroad tracks, and we ended up having to wait for the forest service to get there, because we couldn't even get to it with our apparatus. So it could have very easily grown into a major fire if we had Wildland Skid unit in the back of a small, little drive truck. If we had the truck, it would allow us to get there and stop the fire in the stages of it. And a lot of our homes are now being built inside in Carolina Color, the Burna already being built right next to the forest, and this will help us build, it typically takes the forest service, I mean, they're part of our automated dispatch, but it's going typically taking them 45 minutes to an hour to get their tractor loaded up and get to where we are. So this would just kind of, if you've got a small fire, be able to help knock that down. But I understand the situation, and a storage building, we are needing a storage building down the road, we're running out of space. We're looking at all different options, actually, I'm looking at possibly buying some storage cubes, like a shipping container, and do a few of those because we are running out of space. I think everybody can say that. And then, of course, personnel, there was some personnel that had to be cut. We were, we had firefighters for the station, and if you're remembering to retrieve, I had a couple positions that I had to ask for in there. So that's around there.
Couple of questions. I stopped by last week and took some fish plates to the fire department and the police department. I noticed that you've got the main fire station a lot more secure with fencing now. Were you having a lot of issues with unnecessary?
Yeah, we started out with the cameras, hoping that would take care of it. And I don't think, it may have helped, but several vehicles were getting broken into in the back parking lot, and so we ended up with some of that stuff.
And you're getting a, like a $10,000 Skidster, I think?
But that was one of the things that got cut, skidging.
Okay, I saw it somewhere. My question is this, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be offensive, I'm just continuing to, while I'm on the board, mention that I think there are many situations in New Bern where a smaller F-350 Chevy GMC 3500 truck equipped with the proper fire suppression could be very beneficial in a lot of events. I know that as the city continues to open up, and we are going to really do what we can to provide a lot of promotional recreational activity at the new Mark Marietta, and just, I know how much we want to get our city back to a mentally healthy position. I just, again, as I go through a lot of other cities and see these trucks used, I still don't quite understand the reluctance or whatever to send a quint out or something when a much smaller vehicle centrally located. I'm not trying to make a belaborate, I just want to mention that.
Since I've been on the board, you said it every year, so I just want to understand, do you, in your, in your position, do you agree with the mayor that it's something that can be used?
It's two ends to the sword. There are some great concepts about squads, and that's what they call them, power fast response units. What I don't think makes it valuable is when you have to split a company to make it work because we work a company of four, everybody has a task. We've got a hired person, we've got a firefighter, we've got an engineer, and we've got a captain supervisor, that crew, four people crew. And typically, I think a fast response would be great addition, too.
Right, so as you're saying?
Addition, too, and it would stop, it would stop wearing there, and it would stop response of certain vehicles, having to respond to every call.
But we need the people to put it?
For us, we need the recommendation to split a company to have two fast response teams, or put two vehicles now to have there, because we're looking, for example, NFPA requires us to have minimal 15, we typically look at 13 to 15 effective response. And if it takes, what would happen on that situation, it would take four vehicles to make that work, but right now, two vehicles, and that's another small vehicle to fix that fire.
So with his idea, how many employees would you need extra to create that?
I think, you've got to look at the bigger picture, too. I think as the department grows, there will be more opportunities for that to occur because we can have more staffing, that they would say, all right, you come in tomorrow, you do a fast response, because I have two apparatuses in this area.
Right.
For example, right now, here right now at the Burna, we are getting close to being that second apparatus out there, and you can say, all right, now that's only two vehicles now to do this part.
One of the things it would save on is emergency medical calls. I mean, instead of sending an engine, correct me if I'm wrong, instead of sending an engine company over to a heart attack, if the squad responded, it would keep that engine company in service at the station. But NFPA dictates, and so does the city of North Carolina, dictates what type of equipment has to respond to each type of call, and there's not a squad in there. I mean, it's got to be an engine or a ladder or both, you know, typically, that has to respond, you know?
So the second thing is the fire, the firehouse. We, Craven, whatever they change names a million times?
That's Craven.
Yeah, I think they're starting to build, like, and they're going to have some houses probably by the end of this year, beginning of the year, like, so this is the budget, possibly next budget, but are we, like, not seriously, like, really considering moving forward with the lease adding or really talking about trying to find the funding? Or is that part of the let's go, the meeting? Okay, just, I'll just check.
Yeah, that's part of the meeting.
I wish we, if we were going to just, we should have had that meeting tomorrow because that is imperative, because I want to get to that.
We do.
I want to get to that meeting of projects because we need that, we have that development coming in, and like anybody else, if my house is on fire, I want somebody to come and I want them to be there as soon as possible.
They're working on two, I think, once we figure out what the 43 connector is going to do, too, and that piece of property we're supposed to get out there, I think that's one of the issues that's helping us back there.
So my actually recommendation, which right now is a temporary fire station, if we want to treat the plant at thereabouts, and something that can be repurposed in the future. And then, once the 43 connector opens up, because what's happening with us there is we've got 17, and you've got 55 and 43, and if the property that Warehouse was looking at donating to the city for us on 43 connector is kind of halfway between, you've got a high-speed highway, technically, but I think by doing that, it would allow us to have one station where if you took one over here, there's going to eventually be a second one, so have to build two stations with the body.
And where were we at with that? Were we?
Well, I think they're waiting, number one, for the 43 connector.
No, it's temporary solution.
It's going to be discussed at the, in that, where it was supposed to be discussed.
Chief, as Alderman Harris mentioned earlier about innovation and looking at things differently, have you or Alice or anyone looked at the distance from the Elizabeth Avenue Station to Craven 30 or West New Bern? If there were a service road put along Highway 70, or if the Elizabeth Avenue was connected, which was the ultimate plan to get to Craven 30?
Yeah, we have looked at that, and Elizabeth Avenue is such a narrow road, the fear of the kid, you know, just going through a neighborhood, responding, emergency traffic, really concerning. Hadn't thought about the service road, but we have looked at what it would take, you know, for us to build, not build, but to travel Highway 70 to there. And it's just before being there, but again, you've got, we've got Echo now having to go as the second dude all the way out there, and this allows us, Elizabeth would be our second dude, and our first dude would come out of that station, as I heard.
When you were talking about that, would it be a service road that is built behind Elizabeth City? Not City, Station, where it's that going through there?
Along Highway 70.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Because then, I mean, the, building a fire station is nothing. I mean, we've talked about that before, the cost of that, you finance it over 20, 30 years, it's nothing. It's the million dollars a year.
Personnel, what do you cost?
It's the million dollars a year that's going to take.
Plus the equipment.
Yeah, when we talk about, you know, the West New Bern area, yes, there's apartments out there, and I'm sure apartments on a fire risk are higher than a residential house because it's multiple people living there. But there's also, as you and I've talked about, the trends where fires are going down, it's the cause for medical calls that are skyrocketing right now. And the other question I had, my last question, hopefully, has there ever been any conversation with New Bern Fire Rescue and Carolina East as far as responding to these particular? I know you only respond to T1 calls or whatever, but obviously, if they take somebody back on ambulance, they make money off of it, and we don't. So is there, has there ever been any conversation about some sort of agreement with them? Because I'm sure that we're taking care of things on Bobby's side of the river, we're going to get there before the ambulance gets there, oftentimes, right? We're going to get there before the ambulance gets there most of the time, right?
That's actually not the hospital over there. That's actually risking twenty to responses there.
Do they get paid when they respond?
Yeah.
To get transported, but you've got to remember too that they probably only transfer, you know, one out of five. A lot of times they go there, all they got to do is sign their refusal. And once they sign their refusal, they can't charge anything.
We do get our supplies back typically unless things have changed from the ambulance service. If we use any type of medical supplies, they usually restock us and then they bill the patient.
And how many guys that you have that certify that works for us?
Are they EMTs?
Yes. And how many do we have?
All of our personnel are certified. Some of them are more than a EMT, but we have, but all of them certified, they're required, former career development. And I hear where you're coming from, Alderman, I really do. And I think we've way past my tenure here, but I think eventually, I think, you know, when you're building these fire stations, you need to kind of look and say, all right, I'll still provide you with space, put your unit in. Because what happens, makes it so intriguing for fire departments to make a difference is because you've got that golden hour of making difference and saving somebody's life. And we're typically strategically located out. We're here to come out of central, where rather than having a, you know, three to four minute response, we might have them eight, we'll have nine, fifteen minute response. So that's typically why you see it go to the fire service. And we're blessed to have a hospital that provides it. I mean, there's a lot of municipalities that have that. Greenville doesn't have that. That's why you see Greenville have, you know, does the transport. But when you talk to them, it's not a money maker. There is compensation there, but it probably sustains not making money.
Well, definitely, they're definitely not as much in the red as we are when we get to a call, but we get nothing regardless.
Chief, I have one question relative to personnel because I pulled your information when you gave the presentation. And one of the things I remember you talking about was an office assistant. And I know that you used to have two in there, now you've got to one, you just have this one in the right?
Yes, ma'am, actually, there's two positions that we're down. We've not hired a deputy chief since I took the chief position. So that's one position that we're down, even though we were at that point, of course, adding the type of thing. And then in two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten, excuse me, after two thousand and eight issues the city was having, the surge got way down, we lost a position and she got active moved to another department. So we've not had that from two thousand and eight.
But what you did hear is though you, through attrition, it looks like you've got some scheduled retirees that you were able to make.
If you've got the time, I'd be glad to explain that to you.
Replacement, I mean, if he's got the funding, why can't we replace and add these positions? And I'm just curious how you look at that. I don't know when you're doing the overall funding, but that's my question.
If Bobby wants to share his insight and then I'll share mine, that's probably a agree to disagree on both of our parts. Because, I mean, I don't doubt that his department has some, has maybe some needs there. But as you've experienced, there's lots of other needs with all these other departments as well. I know Bobby, what, a year ago, was it? Bobby, you got six additional firemen?
Two years.
Two years ago, six additional firemen added to his budget. That's a, that's a pretty significant addition. He had two million dollars worth of fire trucks last year, which equated to a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year in debt service. That's now added to the general fund. So that was last year. We came to the board back in January with, as we said we would, after we saw what COVID was doing. And there are still all of those frozen positions that were requested by our department heads, but there was no action taken because we wanted to continue to be conservative with regards to where, we didn't know where COVID was going. It doesn't mean that, again, all these other departments have needs. The unfortunate thing is, is fires in the general fund. General fund dollars get spent across many different departments. As I stated before, and I've stated several times before, ten and a half million dollars of requests for revenues or expenditures over what our revenues will support. So you've got to cull that list down based on the needs. And I know, like I said, he's got lots of needs. If the board wants to fund those in a different way, then so be it. But I know there's lots of needs from every single one of these departments.
Bobby?
Go ahead.
No, are you done?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bobby, you also, you've had quite a few people retire. I mean, your department's got a lot of thirty-year employees. You've got, I just spoke to, well, I just spoke to Captain Roeburg a couple of days ago, and he's getting ready to retire, along with three or four others that are getting ready to retire that are thirty-year employees. You know, years ago, we used to have three office assistants. If you look at what other, it's the third largest department in the city and we got, he's got two people to help him do all the paperwork, all the payroll, schedule all the inspections and everything else there is to, has to be done in there. You have two staff members, two office assistants to work for seventy-seven employees. And on top of that, you've got Jim McConnell, which what's his rank now?
He's training division chief.
Yeah, training division chief. Jim McConnell is working sixty and seventy hours a week. He's the only person in the department that trains seventy employees, seventy-seven employees. And on top of all that, with the CLIA stuff coming up, somebody's got to handle that. And he has demonstrated time after time after time that he can handle, if we give those two positions, he can handle it without any increase in his budget, line item, his salary line items.
So, I hear you. I just wanted to ask, so I have you in front of me, is I know when we did do those positions, we were implementing the program to diversity with women. How is that going with the search or, you know, how did that work? How is that working out with?
So the, so the program that you were doing when you were, when we did the six positions and you wanted it to be diverse and we hired the females? Oh, I got you. Well, I just asked you, I'm glad you answered. I just met Craven Community College the other day. We've been working closely with the high school on trying to get kids through their programs there. Because the good thing about there is they can leave high school and have their certifications. Once they turn eighteen, all they have to do is do a live barn. So they go right out of high school to become a firefighter. Now, a lot of times we find out that people just don't, they never thought about being a firefighter. They just hadn't ever thought about it. And so I've met with the college the other day and telling them, I said, look, we'll partner with you. We've got the training grounds, you'll just get us having an academy where we can get people interested in here and getting them to train. And we actually went and plugged them in that. So after they leave the academy, that they can take our career development and start designing classes. They said, all right, you're through with your field part, now you need to go do your leadership part, you need to do your management part, things like that. But I think what we're finding out is just, people just never thought about the firefighter. So Colleen has been great, Facebook is the best thing ever to do. We'll post on there and we'll get, you know, seven hundred shares, something like that. We probably got more applications going that route than ever. Hey, we need places to make that.
I think that's good. Because I tell you all the time, I'm a big fan of Chicago Fire and when you watch it in the different positions, like, not just being a fighter fire, but there's so much that you can do with that, like, because you can go off, probably not here, I don't know. Like, if, you know, you're able to investigate how the fire happened and stuff. So there's a lot to that career and so I definitely do support it. You know, if two positions are needed, you know, I'm on board.
Let me ask you a question. How many hours of training a year, last year, did your employees receive?
Well, we averaged somewhere around, you know, but everybody's required to do two to three hours a day. You're required to do two or three hours a day. And we like company officer, it looks like a hundred and some, ninety some hours, we've got to have just that. I've got it broken down somewhere, but it's.
Plus con ed? Do we, I mean, Jim's responsible for all that? I mean, and EMT, how many hours a year does an EMT take to re-cert it? Like, it used to be thirty-six.
Firefighters, two hundred and sixteen hours. Firefighter, new driver, two hundred and seventy-six hours. Firefighter drivers, two hundred and twenty-eight. Officers, two hundred and forty. Crews, two hundred and forty. EMTV's thirty-six. OSHA required classes of six. Bloodborne pathogens, none three.
And that's required classes? That is being taught by poor one guy, one guy that is about to be burnt out. He's working sixty, seventy hours a week. Again, he's demonstrated that he can hire these employees and it will not increase his budget. June, he's got four people going out. One of them, a captain, the other three are senior employees that will be replaced with a lot lower salary. So his situation will only get better. And if we don't hire somebody to help Glenn out, we're going to be hiring somebody to replace her.
Mark, those assumptions that Bobby just mentioned, were those retirements taken into consideration with this proposed budget?
Well, overall, yes, because you're talking about the general fund.
So those funds, for example, I'm just speculating, could help absorb the increased costs that we had to find for the SROs that were no longer being supplemented by the grants.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I'm just saying, if we get to the other meeting, the office assistant. I don't think it's, I'm really.
He needs, he needs the training.
Depending on how that, that meeting pans out with some of the projects, you may be able to find some funds. But I do agree, all of the department heads, they all have needs. I get it. But.
Alderman, I'd like to comment if you don't mind.
Sure.
I agree with you one hundred percent. Building a fire station, that's a million dollars. That's a million dollars for personnel. But I think what, this particular scenario here is a little bit different to me. Because right now, I've got administrative assistant that probably, well, I did a quick math and it's cost me somewhere around nine hundred dollars a pay period for overtime, just my admin staff. About twenty-three thousand dollars a year it's costing me in overtime, just to have them kind of catch up on some things. The tag chiefs, of course, their salary, I can't really put a price tag on it, but they're doing somewhere around twenty to twenty-five hours above their normal work hours. And then the training chief is about thirty to thirty-five hours per pay period above. And some of the things we've done is, it takes a lot of time to put together and put the different things and try to delegate. But what's, what makes it very difficult for us is, yes, I've got a seventy-two person department, but in reality, I only have twenty-five to twenty-seven because there's three shifts. So only, any given day, I only have like twenty to twenty-five people. And five or six of those are admin type of staff. So it's not like I can give you as a firefighter today, a project that I need to be continuously worked on. And you're a shift person and you take a day off and you're off of work for seven days. That's what makes it very difficult. Or I would distribute a lot of this wealth among the staff, but I'm limited beyond my admin. And I think, you know, when we pick good stewards and try to show that, that we are saving money. I'll give you a good example of right down to the penny, because I've spent a lot of time with this. It costs me about fifty-three hundred dollars to promote two engineers to be captain. It costs me about forty-six hundred dollars to promote two fire specialists to be engineer. And then to hire three fire specialists is about ninety-seven thousand dollars. Cost to fund a new training division captain is about fifty-two thousand. Cost to fund a new office assistant is about twenty-nine thousand. So that's about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's with the two positions. We, right now, our salaries went down a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So I'm in plus about six grand, just for the retirement attrition compared to putting two people in there. And I understand we're one piece of the pie. I understand, I understand your comment about SOR. That's all about, if he needs it, I'm all about it. But I think, you know, I think, I've been asking for this for three years, for these positions. And I'm not asking for anything that we didn't already have, staff wise. I'm asking to replace.
And again, it says a lot to the fact that we are in the process of about to be the twenty-third, you said, in North Carolina when it comes to accreditation?
No, not only that, how many departments in the state of North Carolina are class two departments now? It can't be more than ten or so.
It's probably seventeen.
Seventeen departments out of, there used to be thirty-five hundred, how many are there now? Is that about right?
No, it's like fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen, okay. So that's what I'm saying. So I, when it comes to the personnel in regards to making sure that our staff is not overworked when it comes to the stuff that you have to do, yes, I do support that. You've been asking for it for three years, I do support that.
Thank you, Jamie, I appreciate that.
I do support that.
And I would like to tell you, just, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just say that you have a class two fire department, one of how many in the state? One of fifteen, how many departments are class two?
About seventeen.
Seventeen fire departments in the state of North Carolina are a class two department. You have a department that's going to receive accreditation. How many are in North Carolina now?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-seven, I believe, was the number.
In North Carolina or nation?
Two hundred and eighty-eight in the nation.
Okay, so you have one of, you know, you have one of twenty-seven departments that is accredited throughout the state. He has proven time after time after time again that he can do this with the salaries that he will be saving from retiring staff members. So I'd like to make a motion that we ask the city manager to place back in the fire department's budget for a office assistant as well as a training captain, the two positions that he is in desperate need of.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion to second. Now, did I understand this is salary neutral, so to speak?
Yes.
No.
No.
It can't be. That's what I just asked the manager. He utilized that savings to help offset the cost of the SROs we had to absorb.
The SROs or anything else?
It's revenue neutral for the fire department, but fire department is part of the general fund.
That's correct.
But that SOR situation is the whole conversation though, like.
We don't penalize the fire department?
Yeah, I wouldn't penalize the fire department over that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You penalized the police department two years ago when you gave six officers to the fire department when the chief or the police asked for more people.
It really is, it's a, it's a give or take across all the different departments. I'll be honest with you, last year, I'll give you, for instance, Foster sits there last year as we asked all the different departments last year so that we could balance the budget to go find, certain departments to go find money. Foster went and found fifty or sixty thousand dollars he cut out of his budget. Then when we turned around, we added a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of debt service to buy fire trucks.
Okay, we can do it again.
I call a question, Mr. Mayor.
Well, seeing that you're calling a question, I normally just don't buy a car at the dealership till I think about it a little bit. So you called a question, so we'll.
Is there a board?
Can I just, before, can I just give a suggestion of holding off on this motion just so we can have that one meeting? Because I don't know about child, but I feel when Mary presents all of these projects and things and stuff, I feel like there may be some.
Well, employees wouldn't have anything to do with buying, hiring employees.
If we have funds allocated to different departments that are set out for projects with our own funds that we can utilize through the other funding, that money is still there. So I'm, I'm just, I don't know, I just say, we don't have to, we don't have to pass it tonight or do what let's do on it and we're not, you know what I'm saying?
We can do whatever you want to do, but it's a budget session and it's typically is when we hear this kind of stuff during a budget session.
So are you withdrawing your second?
I didn't say it's a second.
Are you withdrawing your second? Okay, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
No.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Of course. And this is to Mary. I know, I think with the American Rescue Act plan, there's like three hundred million dollars for firefighters grants.
And he's applying for some.
I don't think it's sustainable year after year, but this is a year after year item.
Well, I mean, this is three hundred, this is a part of the pie. We can get to start this, get these.
We have a grant writer, we need, she needs to be writing grants for every opportunity.
Yeah, and he is.
Because I'm all for it, but.
He's in the process of applying for grant money for about forty thousand dollars worth of SCBA.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, boy, it's been a long time. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of SCBA, if he doesn't get, we're going to be required to hear that next year. So he is utilizing grant funds or working with writing grants.
No, that's just a general, but I'm all for it.
Okay, you vote as well.
Of course, we need, it's all needed, and I just think that we need to look at more time in here for five-year capital.
Mr. Astor called, called a question and we're voting now.
I'm getting there. Give you a little time, we're getting there.
It's already decided anyway.
Exactly, you know, so, you know, what? No.
Alderman Odom?
No.
I do want to congratulate you, that was a four to three. And they got, you know, my, my mention earlier about the smaller truck. You know, if you send that truck out and you, you do a probability study of the city and, you know, certain times of the day, particularly with all the construction on Highway Seventy, you might find a need for that out there and might be another time of the day, it might be very important to have over in this section. I don't know, a study would find that. But having said that, the main thing I was trying to get at with that is the response time to build, to build your, to, to get your response time even better. And I know that at the very least, let's say that, you know, there's eight hours of the day that there's really not that much of a need. But there's a critical need for it from seven in the morning until four-thirty in the afternoon. And so it would warrant and justify two additional personnel. To me, if you got your response times down, if it counted toward response time, that, that this truck got there in half the time of the quint and then it said, no need to bring anybody, it's a small something fire over here, boom, it's out. But then again, when he gets there half the time and then they say, bring everybody and mutual aid, I think there's a need for it. Uh, and, and you know, to that, you know, the cities that have them, they're in all these trade associations and all these other things, y'all having to meet all these guidelines, they're, they're meeting with them. So that's, that's just what I say, that's, but I do congratulate you on what you got.
I want to thank you something, Mary. You challenged me an hour, six years ago on the, to try to find ways of producing. Our choice was the collaboration with the volunteer departments. That's a lot because you pushed me into the direction, that's one thing, first thing to do. And that, that has come to fruition and it's been a good thing. And one thing I say about Alderman, it has always helped me on the analytical side of things because he looks at it that way. And it's helped me to understand, hey, I need to look at the analytical side of things and why it's happening and be able to provide that information. So I appreciate y'all pushing.
Well, we appreciate you.
Yes, what I was gonna say is, it was only a motion, the budget has not passed. So that doesn't mean, don't get too happy. Come back and might not be there, so.
I see, I see that.
Yeah.
All I, all I ask is to hear my voice.
Go back to the drawing board anyway and try to figure it out. And I, I appreciate that and understanding.
I'm, I'm very proud of ISO too myself.
But I think there's.
I appreciate what you've done to get that.
Some areas we'd like to.
Yes.
While, while the board's providing the direction too, do you, are you anticipating wanting to use fund balance for this fund? Or are you wanting to take it from other departments or where, you know, because that's, there's, it's a hundred and, I don't know, ladies, any idea? I think Bobby mentioned a hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars, so it will make our budget unbalanced. So it's either gonna come from fund balance, we gotta cut the budget.
Right down to.
Fund balance?
Yes, sir.
Off the top of your head, yeah, that would be the easiest way.
We'll just re-take it something.
Instead of cutting somewhere else, but I still think.
Okay.
We'll, we'll see what happens when we pass this budget.
Thank you for your time.
Cause I'm, I'm have a motion when he gets up here. Let's go.
Let's talk about Parks and Recreation.
Let's go. Is this the last, are you the last one?
This is it.
Let's go. We saved it for the.
Before you get started, there's a couple of Alderman and women that would like to go out and see.
Yes.
Far, far back at your, Mark Marietta.
I would love to get in.
I just got the front door.
We'll, we'll take you out there and tell you some things. Happy to do that. So Parks and Recreation, I'm gonna talk briefly, then give you an opportunity to ask whatever questions you want to. So our budget continues to focus on our facility upgrades, improvements, as well as new park amenities. And of course, we're working on Martin Marietta Park, our first phase. We received over six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of grants. We're about ready to finish up one of our big grant projects at Martin Marietta Park. And then we're gonna do a grand opening of the park with new interest, new signage coming in there, nice gates that have been in. Staff are currently working on new restrooms and shelter, large shelter. We just completed a new playground out there that's very unique, and it's an adventure playground. So I think kids are gonna really like that. One of the things that we're gonna be working on this year, and then we're gonna go within the budget, is open up Swim Beach. I've got our wetlands, permanent approval for that, but Swim Beach will open up, as well as installing a bike pump. So those are low-hanging fruit that we're really excited about. And in terms of capital items, you know, it's, it's really just a lot of equipment that we've had a need for. We've worked, I've been here for, come up on four years in November, and we've worked on vehicle replacements. And we're really just a few years away completely getting all this stuff in place. Replacement vehicles, mower replacements, we mow. We've got in Parks and Recreation, fourteen-hundred acres that we maintain. And that is a lot of grass, a lot of green spaces, a lot of parks, a lot of cemeteries that we maintain with really twelve staff. And if we're lucky, we have eight temp agents, temp staff come in. And unfortunately, last year and this year, the way COVID has been, it's been hard for the temp agencies to get help as well. So we're struggling with that. And, you know, the good thing is, we heard from the prisons, they're being raised for our police and prisoners again. So we'll take as many as we can for that. So that'll, that'll help us out, right? Some of the big projects I think are currently in this budget is the Lindbergh Park payment project. That's, that's huge. Union Point Park upgrade, and what we're looking at is adding some able parking around the horseshoe, doing some, having additional light, electrical infrastructure and some drainage issues there. Union Point Park has really come all over the last few years. We can see a lot of the rentals for parks. And this year and last year, with how COVID has, has affected us, we, we can't get anyone in the, in the recreation center right now. So if we do an event out in the parks, we have them crawling all over the place. And I'm really excited. We just started to drive in movies last Friday night, showed Back to the Future. We've got a ton of things throughout the summer, over, over the fall. And then our Footloose on the New Summer Concert series starts up next Friday night. And I think we've got a really good lineup at the back throughout the summer, so that's gonna be a lot of fun as well. You know, we're about quality of life and for our citizens and, and we always have a good panel with that. And we're excited. We did ask for three staff and, and we've got one in the budget, so we're ready for anything we can get in Parks and Recreation. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Foster, how about the shelters at the cemeteries? Did we make any headway on that? I think that we're still having a little bit of discussion on that. The last time, city manager, I spoke about that. So for those that may not know, if you ride through one of our cemeteries and you look at the shelter that we offer for families to have a service, it's, it's pure embarrassment.
Yeah.
And if there's ever been a need in a time like that, it's, it's a shelter. I think Matt had some, obviously the numbers aren't played, it goes through materials, through roof, but it certainly wasn't.
Matt, Matt had some very expensive ones. Foster provided some other updates, so that's for this board to decide whether or not they wish to move forward with those. But, you know, if he can find those prefab ones like he's budgeted for, then, and, and it meets what the intent is. The other thing we did is, is I asked Foster to get and gather some information about the amount of burials that you have based on sales in the particular ones now. Uh, you know, I, I think it would be foolish for you to go spend a bunch of money where there may not be a bunch of burials remaining versus others. You may put up something a little different. New Bern Memorial is a no-brainer. I mean, you've got tons and tons of space and availability over there. But some of the other ones have, have reached capacity or getting close to reaching capacity. So it's a matter of whether the board wants to make the spend in those particular locations. You've got four major cemeteries, all of which are still receiving burials, but there's a very significant difference between what happens at New Bern Memorial versus any of the other.
And the last, last comment I'll make is about the fee schedule. Alderman Bingle and I have had some conversation about this. I, I would, I would propose that we find whatever an equitable rate is and we offer that as our standard rate, and then we offer in-city residents a fifty percent discount. So take your, my suggestion would be is take our current in-city rate, double that, that becomes our new rate. And then if you're an in-city resident, you get a fifty percent discount off that. That's just my recommendation because, you know, the taxpayers, the city of New Bern are the ones that's, that's funding the maintenance of the cemeteries and the parks and the ballfields and all that. And when you have folks that's outside the city, we're glad to have them here because they probably go eat at a restaurant, but that's within the county, we can get sales tax revenue anyway. But the extra cost that is on the burden of the city of New Bern should, we should absorb that some.
When you think about it, we provide recreation for transporters. Anybody that has to come and get some recreation. You know, I mean, all our parks are used by, there's, there's no payment. And I just think it's only fair, you know, we're paying for pools and parks and other amenities for the band. They don't have parks like we do. So all of them, you know, their address is New Bern and they use all our stuff. But I think, you know, growing up, I lived by beaches and it was Dry Beach, which was next door. And you paid double to go there if you weren't a resident of the city. You had to show a resident's card, but you didn't get them, so I think that happens in New Bern.
Right, and right now, our, our rates, on average, it all depends on what, what the top gives. But they're twenty-five to thirty percent above what the city resident rate is. And, and yes, we, we definitely have work to do on that. To give sticker shots, but that's why we've been trying to do it each year, things like that, so.
The two employees that you're looking for, what, what, what would the need be for where?
Um, that, that is for ground mounted specials. I can give you a great example, when's the last time I'm hanging on over here in the Parks and Recreation Center? If you have to be here in three years, I'll put the lights back on in the chimney if you'd like to see that. But our, our staff basically redid this room, placed, placed the tile, painted everything, put new lights in, new drop ceiling in. And it's not like what we're doing everywhere. We've got specialty crews that are building our shelters, building our restrooms in-house. The only thing we haven't done in two restrooms we built is lathered lock, we've been able to do the electric plumbing and things like that. So getting that skilled labor has really helped us out since I've been here. Staff normally just focused on picking up trash in the parks and mowing. And now we're able to do a lot more things, taking a load off of public parks that they had to do all this. And they're still a good use to be with their things. And now we've got dedicated folks in Parks and Recreation that can get that now.
My last question is, um, what's up with the amphitheater? What, what are we waiting on? Because that is the cash cow. We about to open up America again, we should have concerts. We're eastern North Carolina, I won't have to drive to Raleigh, it's literally down the street. Pepsi, Pepsi don't want to have Pepsi amphitheaters, like, we can, we can get this. I'm serious.
I think that when, when that, when that meeting is rescheduled, that, that will be a lot of conversation.
Can we do a meeting tomorrow since we still do two days? I mean, come on, because who does not want to go to an amphitheater? You got the Swim Beach and the amphitheater? Come on, y'all, let's go. That, that is gonna bring in revenue, revenue. Do you know how many citizens travel to Raleigh to go to concert? Right, concerts and stuff. Durham, when I went to J. Cole, he had the whole festival, forty thousand people. Do you know how much money that brought in? Are you kidding me? I'm serious, we really need to, we have all that land, we need to get this amphitheater. A skate park, what, why, let's fund the skate park, let's go. We need, we are ready to come out and, and get our lives back. We need, we need this.
I'm gonna tell you, Jamie, that was coming all the time, you know. But money can make the bear beds.
We, we got money. We got, we got, we have money, we have money, it's just whether we choose to spend it on these different things.
We're gonna discuss all this in our next meeting for the.
So when, so.
But I have, I have a quick question about this, but I just, your security cameras in the park.
Yes.
I noticed that Don Miller Park was not listed as a, I mean, we.
That's actually in this year's budget, but.
Okay, well, I didn't see Miller Park, I saw Monk Mallard Park, but I did not see Miller Park in there.
Yeah, Don Miller Park, they've actually installed some of the infrastructure, that's definitely installed power.
They are still having problems with some drug deals going down there, whatever. And I just feel like if we had cameras and better lighting there, that would be better. So I asked about that. And I know you're doing scoreboards, you have ten thousand in there. Is that something that can be sponsored by? I know in Morehead City, Chick-fil-A has sponsored their scoreboard there at the, you know, field, at the ball field. So I was just curious if there would be opportunities to say use that.
There, there's, traditionally, we rely on softening to do that. And that, that really drives us, it's really getting hard to find, but it's, it's funny that that kind of money. Some of the parks here, if you've been fortunate, see how well we do the chicken, we're running a lot of chicken out of there.
Pretty good communities, or like a Sunday dinner in Morehead, they may be willing to do here. And then, I know I asked you this before, but I'm gonna ask you in front of everybody else about, let's go, some food online. Is that for Union Point or for Lawson Creek Park?
Lawson Creek Park and also some, some of the units on Park. So we're a consultant and we've got a couple of things, I don't have to go with the next one now, we'll, we'll provide that for you.
That's it.
Foster, you, you were saying about the number of acres of land that you have to cut. And the cemeteries, does that contract it out or is your staff actually cutting the cemeteries as well?
We do that. We usually use the contract out, that job, and you can, you stop doing that a few years, you'll contract start increasing. So we use those funds to hire the temp. So that's how, on average, we have about eighteen employees. But right now, we're ready to get forward, hope to do what we can for a week before someone drops out. Traditionally, in the summertime, once it gets time to cut the cemeteries, the strongest survive and the weakest, we drop out. It's hot in the cemeteries and then they get on the weed or for eight hours a day in the cemetery, it's difficult.
Another question too, have a Christmas tree, can I have another Christmas tree? Where is that gonna be located?
No, we, we're not willing to add another Christmas tree.
Okay.
And I don't think the city manager recommended that, but that, that was to install another section of it to increase the height.
Oh, true. I thought some traction, oh, I shouldn't, locate it on another part of town. So what about not having, correctly if I'm wrong, having a Christmas tree on the other side? Like the old Martin Marietta or New Bull or Blue Mountain?
That's up to, that's up to budgeting it, and if we find a good place to do it, I mean, we could do it.
I think that would be on that.
Over in Martin Marietta Park, next to the amphitheater. Come on.
You know, you know, Union Point Park, a few years ago, it's our skilled labor that we have, we started doing Christmas decorations. Where I came from, we did a holiday light tour. And yes, one of my dreams here is to do something like that, is something like Martin Marietta Park, which would be a great place to, to do that, and that would draw huge crowds.
Back in New York, we, you look for, and, okay, so, because I know we're trying to go, but when you think, when I think about Parks and Rec, it is the, it's, it's the opportunity to bring in revenue to the city. So we work, we want to go do stuff, I don't want to have to travel. So if we create these amenities, especially with everything's going on, the pandemic and how this has changed everybody's life, it's literally down the street, it's within the city limits to be able to do something. You know, you have like the mail plant, somebody going to a concert, it's local. Yeah, you want to get out, but if we create and continue to create these things and they're equitable, like you said, in regards to the fee structures and stuff, we're gonna bring in revenue. It's gonna bring in to downtown and all over and bring in the foods and, and stuff. I mean, we really, that, it, it goes hand in hand. And it's not just because I want an amphitheater, it's, it's needed, it's another form of bringing in revenue. So we've really got to be, we really got to figure that out, I'm serious.
So, so Foster, the next phase of Martin Marietta, is that gonna be like a lot of it coming through grants and then we, the city's gonna have to match it?
That's correct, yes.
What about?
And, and sponsorships, remaining rights.
So are we getting the little, what is it, the little with it course?
With it? We're gonna be talking about that as well.
Any other questions on Parks and Recreation?
Thank you for all your hard work and all your hard work that your staff does.
What else do we have come forth at this time on, on the budget?
That's all we've got, sir.
I just want to thank all of the staff, Mark, Mary, Kim is your name? Thank you for all your hard work. This, this budget, I don't care what y'all say, this was beautiful the way it looked. Cause I know there's always been a complaint for the last three years.
I had a hard time reading it.
Really?
Well, because it was just a different part, you forget, I've been looking at the old budgets for years.
But this, this right here, the flow, it made it very easy. But this, this right here, flow, it made it very easy to navigate. I really appreciate the hard work. Like you said, the stuff, it, you know, this is probably one of the most tedious things you have to do every year, so I know it takes a lot of work, so I appreciate all of your effort that you did to put this together.
As of all the years, the, for a year, and you've done an outstanding amount of work. We're gonna, we're gonna, thank you, we're gonna try to.
Eight, eight years. We still got.
Outside board members, turns down the mayor's.
Mayor. By not having, so, we've got to get that later.
Oh, what? Oh, we have, we have these guys that talk about.
Just. We want that, that deal, and $10,000. Should take long.
One, one other item that is on the agenda, Mayor, is to receive any public comment on the proposed budget. I don't think you're gonna have a whole lot, being that it's only staff that's left, but if you wish to do that.
I need to open a public hearing at the staff.
No, it's not a public hearing, it's just our, you, you always opened it up for the public to comment on it, but.
We've got a few people on Facebook that have, hey.
Well, and I still think we should allow the public, I mean, so our first meeting would be next week, so I, I guess that would be the time for people to.
Well, there'll be a public hearing, for sure. I mean, we always do that.
I like to separate the public hearing from the voting on it, 'cause I don't think it's fair for people to say their case, and then we vote on it, I think we should.
That's not the intent either.
You got it.
So you will have a public hearing at the next board meeting, and then subsequently, the, yes, and then there will be a, subsequently, the adoption of the, the budget, assuming that there's no major discussionary items that the board wants to consider at the second meeting in May. If so, you still have two other meetings in June, you can approve it. But as, as I always do, I advise you to try to get it done, but that first meeting in June at the latest, because it usually takes a little while for them to key in things. It's gotten a lot easier now that we have the immune system, 'cause really, all they have to do is say, hey, convert, and everything switches over, and it's good to go, but they still have to go in and verify a lot of things. But it's, it's still a little bit complicated, it's not just as easy as one click.
Right.
So, so the sooner for the accounting staff and department heads and everything else, the better, because then they can start gearing up. So when July 1 hits, they're ready to roll.
So, we definitely, uh, hold on. Or some, some replacements. Yeah, I spent my money already, but I'd be sorry. I feel like I spent my money in giving those two positions. I'm okay, I'm okay with the way it is now, the COLA and the merit, but I would agree that if we can get funds from the American Rescue Plan, that we can give a one-time bonus, I would be okay with that this year.
What did you say that?
I said that money's gonna spend about 10 times like we.
Well, but it comes from different pots, though. I mean, it divides up, right, right, Mary?
$6,000.
You can spend it in different ways. But I would, I would acquiesce to that, that's the way, I mean, I'd.
We only ask it for $240,000, and $3.5 million has come in this month. That's the way, 'cause I just spent all my money.
I like to think, well, should be adjourned.
Second.
No, 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 no. No, I, I would say what you're saying. I mean, I would say.
I unsecond that adjournment.
I, I agree, our employees are, are most valuable assets. We cannot run the city without them. And I agree with Alderman, I said 2%, I think it's a 2%, right? For the COLA. And they'll be getting additional $500, too, hopefully from the, uh, American Rescue Act plan. No, I, well, no, we got the money from the American Rescue Act plan, it's strictly for, and Mary told us at one of our board meetings.
I'm okay with that, I'm okay with that, but if you raise other, then you gotta keep going. You know, when you do a COLA, then you, you take that on for the next year, and that's what I'm concerned about.
I think our employees deserve it.
Well, I'm not saying they don't deserve it, but at one point, we're trying to give them.
We are getting the salary study done this year.
Well, don't study the salary, I mean, I get that we have to do it, but at the end of the day, they all quit tomorrow. So I mean, we, we do gotta make sure that we're, you know, staying with the time.
They quit tomorrow, they're not gonna quit tomorrow.
That's true, whatever. I agree with that. But all I wanna say is that they're two different pots. That is, the money that's coming from there is a one-time, it's a bonus, that you're gonna get taxed anyway, so it ain't really gonna be $500.
We had a motion, second, to, to adjourn now, we.
I thought she took the second.
Now, they're gonna do the second.
Hold them, second.
It sounds like, before we vote on that, there is some additional conversation here. Somebody?
I call a question.
Okay. Show of hands that want to adjourn based on the motion and the second.
I, I, we gotta do respect when at least a lot of people speak.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just trying to see if the, if the motion is gonna pass. I'm not planning on voting for it myself, because there are other aldermen that wanna continue to speak. So I guess show of hands for those that want to adjourn.
Who else wants to speak?
There's, there's.
Barbara. Barbara's.
That's what I was gonna say, she's already said her piece.
I think we should give the employees a 2%, and.
So you're gonna make a motion?
Well, they already know how to adjourn.
Well, the motion's on the table, we got to vote. But the mayor was.
If you're gonna make a motion to put this issue to rest, then I will retract my second to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay, the budget calls for 1.4 across the board and a 2.1.
Up to a 2.1.
Up to a 2.1 from a zero to 2.1, which is really actually only affecting about 20 employees, from what I understand.
Exactly.
So, I, I really should ask that question.
2.1 for 20 employees, yes. 20 to 40 employees. The rest of them are gonna get 1.6 or 2.1 or whatever, depending on where they score on the, the rating, based on their performance.
They're gonna get something, but not a.
So you're looking at, employees will get 3.5, 3, 2.5, or probably 0. Because the 0 people are the ones that aren't performing, and probably.
And that's merit, but COLA is across the board.
Separate it, Mark.
That is both together. 3.5%, which is 1.4 and 2.1, equals 3.5. Then you'll back it down a half a percent based on where they come on, based on their performance, like we do every year.
So everybody's gonna get the 1.4 plus, you know, so, so somebody's gonna get a 3% raise. It'll be a 1, it'll be the 1.4 plus their merit is the 3. Somebody's gonna get a.
With the merit and only 20 to 40 employees.
For instance, if somebody scores the max.
20 to 40, she's confused, the 20 to 40 employees is the highest.
If someone scores between the 4.3 and a 5, our rating system is 0 to 5. 5 being a rock star, 0, man, you need to go. All right? 5, 4.2 to 5, those people will get the COLA of 1.4 plus 2.1 for merit, which is the highest merit you can get. A total of 3.5% increase. The people who fall between, and I haven't figured these numbers yet, but if, if they fall between 3.3, or, I'm sorry, 3.5 and, and 4.2, then they're gonna get a 1.4% COLA and a 1.6% merit increase, which totals 3%. If they fall between 2.8 and 3.5, they're gonna get a 1.4% COLA and a 1.1% merit, which is 2.5%. And anybody that falls down here in this low area gets nothing. It's based on merit.
They get 1.4%.
Well, that, do we do the 1.4 for them? I don't think so, no, we don't.
Exactly, so.
They don't get a cost of living if they.
What Bobby is trying to explain, from what I'm understanding.
I think they need to go on a work plan, honestly.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Cost of living should be there regardless, and cost of living is 1.4%. 1.4% on these salaries. That is chump change. I don't understand why every year, I wanna go home, but I gotta get it out. Every year, we sit here and bicker over these, these, these salaries. We would not be able to function without every department and every person here. 1.4 is, we, I mean, we have to be able to create, we asked a long time ago, I, I was supposed to get a presentation, a better way to understand this, or how it works out, but I'm sorry. We have to make sure that we're taking care of our employees, whether we agree or, or across the board or not, but if you're in your job, you wanna raise, you want a raise.
You need to raise just for showing up and doing your job.
Exactly, the prices is going up.
So you're gonna give 1.4% for the people that don't show up? That's the problem with the COLA.
If that, so then that's a reflection on the department head and them being there.
If they don't show up, then you need.
Then they need to be, that's, that's, that's the thing, so.
They, they could be on a performance improvement plan, and you're gonna give them 1.4% while they're on a performance improvement.
So then that needs to, that's, it's all about policy changes. But at the end of the day, a COLA, no, 1.4 is ridiculous. It is 2021. That's ridiculous.
You wanna make a motion?
Well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion. Yeah, but when you make $100,000 and you get a 1.4% raise, and you got somebody making $30,000, then make, so, how is that equitable?
That's the other part of when, when you come with the merit, but there still should be a standard equitable moving. But we asked for years to, 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 to sit here and analyze and, and make a policy that's gonna be equitable for everybody. We still have not gotten that. So until we get that, every budget season, we're gonna sit here and go back and forth on regards to who's gonna get what or how it's gonna be digged out, so.
Well, I wanna make a motion, if there's no more questions on board, comments. I make a motion that the current COLA that's set at 1.4% be increased to 2% for fiscal year 2122.
You have a motion and a second, there's a discussion. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
No.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Mayor Outlaw?
No.
Alderman Astor?
Yeah.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Beagle?
No.
I, I just wanna say, when Mr. Stevens first came work seven years ago, Mr. Stevens, we had over 500 employees, and we had a kind of, we had an economic situation, and you, unfortunately, as instructed by that current board, in the fiduciary best interest of the city, you went from 500 and what?
Um, probably four.
504, and you went down to about 470.